Good morning, everyone, and welcome to this morning's meeting of the Waste and Street Seeing Policy Committee. Thank you for attending and welcome. This meeting today is open to the public and is being webcast, and the recording will also be available to people to view later through the council website. It is possible that Sheffield Live TV will record and rebroadcast this meeting, I don't see them here, so I don't think they are. We have received one public question and no petitions. Please, can I request that mobile telephones and other such equipment are switched to silent mode so as not to disturb the conduct of the meeting? There is no fire test plan for today. If there is an emergency evacuation, please take instruction from the town hall staff. The assembly point is Tudor Square. I will now go around the committee and ask for introductions. I am councillor Joe Otten, councillor for Dornotley and chair of this committee, and we'll go around the room that way.
My name's councillor Ruth Merzro for City Ward. I'm substituting for councillor Alexi Diamond this morning.
I'm Christine Gilligan. I'm councillor in Hillsborough Ward and I'm a member of this committee.
I'm Barbara Masters, councillor for Ecosset, and I'm substituting for Sue Alston.
I'm Tim Huggan. I'm councillor for Crookston Crossbow Ward.
This morning, Jo, I'll be Shaun O'Meara Richards, councillor for Manor.
Good morning. My name's Diane Hurst. I'm a elected member for Richmond Ward.
Good morning. I'm Mike Chaplin, councillor for Southie Ward, and this morning I'm substituting for councillor Gary Wetherall.
Good morning, Jo, and I'm councillor Mark Jones. I'm the deputy chair of this committee and Burnley councillor.
And good morning, Mark. And if we can have officers, we'll go this way first.
Morning, members. I'm Robert Parkin, deputy monitoring officer, legal adviser to the committee today.
Morning, members. I'm Richard Ayer. I'm the director of street seeing regulation.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Rachel Appleyard, the democratic services support for the committee.
Thank you. Okay, so apologies for absence. We have apologies from, as we have heard, councillor Alexi Diamond, councillor Sue Alston and councillor Gary Wetherall, and councillors Ruth Merzro, Barbara Masters and Mike Chaplin are substituting. I don't think there are any more apologies because we are all here. Excellent. All items on today's agenda are public, so there will be no need to exclude the press and public. Are there any declarations of interest? No, I take that silence as a negative. Minutes of the previous meeting on page 11 of the agenda pack, can we approve those as a correct record? Are there any comments or questions?
Approved, Chair.
Okay, I'll take those as agreed. Okay, silence as a cent, I'll take those as agreed. Item five, appointments to the Urgency Subcommittee. This is on page 19 of your agenda pack. We now seek approval to appoint councillor Shaun O'Meara Richards to the Urgency Subcommittee. I hope that pronunciation is approximately correct. Are we all agreed with that? Okay, thank you. So that's agreed. Congratulations, councillor Richards.
Thank you, councillor Open.
Item six, public questions and petitions. We have had one question from James Martin regarding the Hackney Carriage policy. I understand he's not here to ask the question. I don't know if there's anybody here to ask on his behalf. If not, a written answer will be provided. I will say it does relate to the paper before us on Hackney Carriages and the need for grab handles, so I think I might ask officers to address the points he makes in presenting that report. Item seven, work programme. Rachel, do you want to introduce this?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. So the work programme sets out all the items due to be considered by the committee, and it's owned and driven by the committee. There's been quite a few changes to the work programme following the work programming session that was held with members a few weeks ago, and these amendments are highlighted in Appendix 1, which starts on page 24. Appendix 1, part 3, starting on page 29, shows the planned items for future meetings of the committee. The recommendations are that the work programme, as set out in Appendix 1, be agreed, including any additions and amendments identified in part 1, that consideration be given to further additions or adjustments to the work programme as presented in part 2, and that the committee give consideration to further issues to be explored by officers for inclusion in the next work programme report for potential addition to the work programme. Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel. I have a number of points to make, but I'll throw this to members first. I saw Ruth and then Barbara.
Thank you. I noticed that the parking enforcement policy and review of annual parking report has been delayed again to September. I know that councillor Diamond has been asking for this since February. Could we publicly note the delays and ask that this is recorded, please? Also, where the potential Christmas parking offer, rather, has been added to the agenda to September, wondering if this should be a TRC decision?
Right, so on the first point, I think your comments have been noted, haven't they? So I don't know if any officers have an explanation for the delay. On the second point, I think, can we take advice on whether it is ours or TRC? I understand that operating the parking arrangements exist, including things like charges, are under this committee, and explicitly parking services in the constitution is under this committee. Decisions as to what should or shouldn't be a parking space on a road would be a Transport Committee matter under the current regimme, so if that's... I'm seeing nods, so I don't... yeah, if you accept that. Yeah, okay, thank you for that. Barbara?
Thank you, Jo. I've noticed on the appendix there are two items, review of glyphosate trials and options, and then review of district energy network and future opportunities. And I'm just wondering, both of these, I've had quite a few sort of questions about from councillors, from constituents. So what does a review entail? Because the glyphosate one's been going on for some time. Will the information be available to the public prior to this review, prior to the week's notice, so that they can actually sort of add comments and make comments, basically? And the second one about the district energy network, this is something I've been pursuing for some time now. Reviews, updates have been promised over the last few, well, year at least. But this is a review, so again, how much information is available now in the public prior to this so that people can contribute their thoughts to it? Because there have been huge advances in that elsewhere in the country, and I'd like to think this has been action rather than just a review. Thank you.
Thank you for that. I don't know if officers can speak to that at all. Richard, is that something you can speak to? Thank you.
Thanks, Chair, and thanks, councillor. So the review of the district's energy network is on the forward plan for November, and you're absolutely right, there's been some work done on it already, that we want to bring it to committee in November, to, A, where we are, but also the opportunities, particularly with the environment coming forward as well, but also opportunities across our estate, how we can plug into the network as well. So it will be a review, and we're hopeful we'll have that probably October time to be able to start some consultation and some public sharing around that period as well. But it will be a review of where we are with district energy network, and then some proposals and ideas to take it forward into the next steps. On glyphosate, I'm quickly looking through the committee report. I did think we've got that on September, Chair. I'm just looking on the report now. Yeah, so we've got the review of the glyphosate trials and options coming in September. So this is following the trials we did around Breencliff and that area. So this will be where we've gone with the trial, but also options on future glyphosate use, particularly on highways and highway networks. It won't include the parks aspects, but it will include the highways network, and that's coming in September.
I mean, yeah, I understand it's on the agenda, and I think, sorry to butt in, Barbara, I think Barbara was aware it was on the agenda. The question is, what site of, what public consultation, public engagement, I suppose, are we going to do on the options before we put them in a paper that is likely to get through? Because I think that's the key point here. I think we need to, yeah, we need to look at. And I think that's what you're asking for, isn't it, Barbara?
Yeah, thank you, Jo. It was, what information is available to the public now? Because this has been going on for some time, and obviously there has been use of sort of herbicides in the district networks. So it raises concerns, and they just like to know something about what's going on before this full report comes through, so they can contribute. Thank you.
Thanks, Chair. I'll take that as an action.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I think that's the right thing to do. I mean, I have a comment on public engagement later under this item, but I think I've seen Tim and Mike so far. I don't know if any of the hands have gone up. Yeah, Tim?
I was just, Barbara's covered most of it on the glyphosate, because there is a lot of public unease about the use of glyphosate, so we need to make sure that they're fully involved in any decision we make with any continued use, and make it clear if there was to be any continued use, why it would be the case, and if there wasn't, and why not to be the case. I'm just saying, I'm not trying to prejudge the trial, I'm just trying to say we need to make sure that we're very clear and upfront, and let the public know as early as possible before a meeting. So that's that one. And the other one is about the food waste collection trial and future options. I hope that doesn't slip any further, because it's been moved from June, from this meeting to the next one, and we do need to push forward with this sort of thing.
Yes, thank you. On that last point, I mean, there's two items here. There's the report from the trial that we had, and then there's the options going forward. And I'm slightly baffled why, what I thought, a report that I was told was almost ready for the March meeting is now coming to the September meeting, you know, on the learnings from the trial. But if anybody could give an explanation for that, I'd be happy to hear it. Otherwise, Mike?
Thank you, Chair. Last year, when I was on this committee permanent, we had the sexual entertainment venues come up twice, and dates were scheduled for that to be taken, and on each occasion it was pushed back. And I now see that it's been moved back to February 2024. Is there any explanation as to why that's happening? There's a second question, and that's on the dog warden service, and I'd also like to know why that's not been scheduled to be put into the work programme at a later date, given that officers were given, came to us with a report and are working on finding an alternative venue to the one that's currently unsuitable. Thank you.
Yeah, again, I don't know if officers can add to this, but certainly on the SEV policy, this was discussed at a strategy resources briefing, and we were advised that because of the length of time that's elapsed since the consultation and the changes in the industry since Covid, that the consultation would have to be rerun. And it's advice I personally agree with. I do think that is the case. So that necessarily would put, you know, a number of months at least between us and the decision. I don't know if you have anything else to say, Richard?
Thanks, Chair, and thanks, councillor. On the kenneling project, that's progressing well, so we weren't intending to bring a formal report back to committee, we can do, we can put that on the forward plan, but we're all keeping councillors briefed on the weekly briefings. But I can get an update separately for that and tell you where the progress is.
Thank you. Yes, I would appreciate that. I know Mike and I visited the current kennels last year as, you know, research for the report that came to us. And, you know, I think we're both very keen that we progress this, and we were able to take care of animals in better conditions than we do. So, yeah, thank you for that, Mike. Are there any other points from members on the work programme? Because I have quite a list. So the first point I'd like to, I'd just like to raise is that of the report that went to Strategy Resources on Monday in terms of the Lowcoq report. I'm not sure that in our work programme we are doing justice to the work that has been given to us in terms of managing the trees, the partnership, and managing AME. And so I'm just going to refer, and apologies to members who don't have it in front of them, to some elements, but for benefit of the minutes, in the Stratton Resources report. So on page 26, there is an action under paragraph 44 for the Waste and Street Seeing Committee to commit and deliver designs in place for all roads outstanding from the highways programme by 6th of March 2024. Now, I think what I would like to ask for is a report to the next meeting of this committee outlining, A, progress on that, and B, a plan for how we're going to meet that deadline. And I see you, Shaun, I'll come to you in a moment. There are this item and a number of other items on this agenda. So on page 29 of the, sorry, page 28, paragraph 54, page 29, paragraph 59 of the Stratton Resources agenda, I can give you these numbers if that helps. Again, they contain commitments to the working with the street tree partnership, that it is our responsibility to deliver. And so, again, that report, I want progress and a plan for delivery of those. And then page 31, paragraph 68d, refers to a review of the focus of the street management board, including refreshing its terms of reference and making clear the interface between the streets ahead governance system and the Waste and Street Seeing Committee. Well, you know, I think that, you know, I'm not actually to make that decision. Decision has been made by Stratton Resources that this needs to happen. I would, I mean, I would ask actually at this moment what the interface currently is between the Waste and Street Seeing Committee and the streets ahead governance system, or rather, the street management board. Richard, can you answer that for us, just to make some progress on this?
Thanks, Chair. So currently, the strategic board for the PFI contract is officer-led and AME and SPV-led. And what we've agreed as part of the Lowcoq report and recommendations is to review the terms of reference, because the terms of reference are still set in 2012 when the contract commenced, and they're outdated. So part of that, we're working with our procurement team and our commercial legal services to review those terms of reference and make sure they reflect where the contract currently is and the outcomes of the Lowcoq inquiry. So that's that piece of work. I suppose, Chair, it's probably something to take offline around member involvement in that process, and I'll get some legal advice on what member involvement can be on that strategic board. That could be an option to pursue.
Yes, I'd welcome that. I just, it struck me on reading this line that I don't think the interface between the governance of the system and this committee is clear at the moment. And therefore, you know, I was asking for a clarification, whether you might be able to make it clear on the spot. If it is inherently unclear, then obviously that's a piece of work to do. Okay, I've got one more item in my list for this item, and then I've seen Shaunhead and Mark. So page 32, clause 71, again, has a number of actions which fall under this committee. So can I, can I ask, my first ask is for a progress report in September that includes a plan for delivery of all those items. So I saw Shaunhead first and then Mark.
On page 22, it says that we would get references from councillor other committees. I'd just like to ask why the references from S and R committee haven't been received by us? Because that committee happened on Monday, and there are references in that which you have just read out. So we should have had those as part of the references from other committees, so that it didn't have to be you remembering to raise them. And can we ask that that's a system that actually is acted on, rather than just being there occasionally, you know, as a reference like that? And then on page 28, in September, we're having a review of the AME performance challenge. Are we going to be asking all members of the council to send us or send to you? Yeah, we'll send them to you, Jo, because you've got nothing else to do. What the AME performance is like in their ward, such that we have a whole council picture of what is happening? Because I know during the elections where we all picked up all the stuff about the potholes that lasted too long, or the groove around Chapel Town roundabout, or all the things that we all niddle about but don't actually have somewhere to take. So can you ask members to do that, please?
Thank you, Shaunhead. No, I think that's an excellent idea, to have all members of the council invited to feed into that session that we have in September. As I say, it's an accountability session on the overall performance of AME against the contract, and largely that is, you know, monitored with statistics and, you know, scores and thresholds and all that. But that is kind of slightly dry, and it misses the picture as members perceive, and as people of Sheffield write to us and say, well, you may have that score, but look at this, look at this road. So I think that's very useful. So, yeah, let's do that. I don't know if there's any comments on the other point about the process. I would say the agendas for this meeting were published before Monday's meeting occurred, so it's not something we'd expect to see in the agenda, but I think...
So we should have had it as an extra item? There's no reason why it shouldn't have been?
I think your point is well made. I don't know if anybody wants to respond to it. No, okay. Mark, you had your hand up?
I think this is supportive of you on the street tree partnership work and the Lowcoq report and responses to it. So obviously, prior the strategy committee that you referenced there, we were to be meeting the street tree partnership in September, where we've only got a 15-minute slot where we come along and observe for 15 minutes and possibly leave. In light of the strategy review, it feels like our relationship with the street tree working partnership does need a significant rethink, and it's not that we're looking to take political lead or ownership of any of this, it's just to make sure that we are reflecting the views and responses of our partners in this wider committee. So you're right to suggest that we do have something offline before then, because I feel that we do need to do considerably better engagement element here, for sure. So hopefully I'm supporting what Jo was highlighting and flagging there, and it feels like something we need to expedite particularly quickly, because with August being a bit of a fallow month, September will be upon us very quickly if we're not careful.
Yeah, no, I endorse that. It does, September, although it could be upon us very quickly, it seems a long time to leave that meeting, and it's for reasons of desire, which are understandable. But stronger engagement between the committee and the partnership, I think, is what the committee would like to see. I'm looking at Richard, who is councillor's representative on the partnership. I don't know what your thoughts are on that.
Thanks, Chair, and thanks, councillor. Yeah, you recall, I think, last year when we set the committee up, a few councillors wanted to be part of the partnership. We took that to the partnership, and it was agreed. It's not for councillor direct involvement, but councillors are welcome to come and observe, and obviously have 15, 20 minutes to set out their views and wishes. I'm happy to revisit that, and as you say, councillor, if we take that offline as part of the briefing, I can retake that to the partnership. We just need to be careful, because it is an open partnership. Even though our views might be to bring councillors on to that partnership, we do need to take the views of the full membership. But I'm happy to take that offline and work with you on that.
Just as a comeback on that, it would be really, really helpful if you would point out that this is in a spirit of cooperation and collaboration, not as a way of trying to impose our will or wishes on the committee. If it is a case that we go as observers and take on board their views and wishes more, then so be it. But I do think that it needs to be, the relationship does need to be strengthened to make sure that we are all aware of each other's positions and where we need to get to.
Yeah, no, again, endorse that. I think, Richard, you'll take that on board, yeah. Okay. So just on that item then, is it agreed that we've asked to add to the work programme the report that I've outlined? Okay, I'll say that is agreed. Item two on my list, I apologize for how long this list is. I'm conscious that there is not much in the work programme on the issue of fly-tipping litter and graffiti. I want to see, I appreciate that these are, this is an area that enjoyed initiatives last year, I think, and I think we'd like to, A, learn the lessons of that, and B, have a think about how we can do better within the resources that we have. I appreciate that is not in itself enough of an ask to create an item for the work programme, but can we agree that we would like to, again, take it offline and see if we can work up a proposal? I know Adman is also particularly interested in this, so I usually know if we can bring Adman into that. Useful to have on board. Is that agreed as another, you know, a desired item? Okay. Number three on my list, again, this is about the question of the team around the place idea in terms of how the council provides services, you know, on the street level. And clearly and rightly, it's an operational matter, and it's led by officers, and I'm not, you know, not wishing to object to that. But I do wonder if there is a role for member oversight of that. And again, I would like to bring that to this committee, because I do think it's a potential, a potential change in how we do things, that it's going to deliver better services for the money. That's the objective. So I'd like us to hear about it, and the people to hear about it, who come to this meeting. Does that sound like a reasonable ask, Richard?
Thanks, Chair. Yeah, again, it's definitely one we can bring to the committee as well as the briefings. I'd like to make it a bit broader than that, because obviously we've got our service plan this year, which involves team around the place, but we've got a programme called transformation of the street scene. I'd like to share that with committee. We've talked to members at the briefing, but I do think making it more formal is a good idea as well.
Okay, thank you. So, I mean, again, I'll let you do that at the appropriate time, but as long as it's on the list of things, it doesn't need to have a particular committee assigned to it just yet. Item four on my list, I would like the committee to receive a report back regarding the events in Stanington with the water leak that entered the gas network. This has been discussed offline. I think the principle is there, that there is a lot of learning being done, and officers would like to bring report. There's a question mark over which committee it comes to. So on that, I would say that clearly emergency planning is under this committee, and so I would like to have that report. If the full council would like it, or if the Stratton Resources Committee would like it, I would say the Lord Mayor and the leader of the council have my number, and they need only ask. It's not something that I'm precious about, but I do think it's important that members and that the public see the learnings from that incident. Mark?
Thank you, Jo. As part of those learnings, I know that we can't, as a committee, compel others from outside of Sheffield City Council to attend. I think it would be really, really helpful to have some of our partners who are also involved and possibly culpable in the incident and its initiation to at least address us and give cognisance to the fact that where they drop the ball, we have to pick up the pieces, because there is a substantial element to this, that there is a fiscal risk to this council for others not taking their responsibilities seriously enough. And it may be that we need to reach further in our recommendations to simply an internal document. And I think that the full council engagement element is going to be critical in this, because we will need to be speaking with one voice about expecting our wider keystone partners to be taking their responsibilities and discharging their duties better, for sure. Because I think there is a lot of stuff that we need to be saying that we've got right, but then maybe we need to be a bit more aggressive on our expectations of others in some elements, as they would rightly be on expecting us to do our job.
Thank you, Mark. You know, entirely agreed. So with those comments added, are members happy with that proposal? Yeah, okay, thank you, that's agreed. So the final item on my list is around the question of public engagement, and I appreciate that the issue of glyphosate has been raised. We have on page 36 a public engagement toolkit that the committees are suggested deploy in pursuit of greater public input into the decisions that we make. Now, I'm just conscious that we've had a year of this system, this new committee system, and... and we generally take decisions based on reports that come to us that the public haven't seen before the agendas are published. And there's, you know, I'm not saying that's wrong. There's a legal process that we follow that that is built upon. But I would like to suggest, and I would like to suggest that we agree to hold a committee-wide public engagement session. And I'm agnostic about how we do this, but I think in principle, and it doesn't have to be great expense, it can be an online thing that people dial into using Zoom or whatever, where we discuss items on the upcoming work programme, such as the glyphosate trial, that we do this at some point in the summer, and that members of the public are invited to come along and, for a change, rather than having to ask questions, invited to come along and make statements, maybe. You know, it's that sort of thing. I know, I know, I know. I'm being extremely radical. If you want to ask questions, they can always come here, can't they? So I don't know how members feel about this, but I think this is something I would like to do, because I think we've not really tested, not really had time to embrace the public engagement aspect of the, you know, of this toolkit that is supposed to be part of the way we work in the committee system. Shonad?
Are you going to make it topic-based? I was just thinking your littering, fly-tipping and graffitiing would be a really good one to start with, to say, you know, call Joe. No, you know, come and talk to all the councillors and, you know, tell us how angry you are. I'm just thinking of that because this morning I've had, you know, a lot from one of the roads in my ward, and it is perennial. But actually talking to people about it as a whole topic, rather than just inviting people to call in about, you know, because our committee is so wide, isn't it? And if it works, you might want to have a series of call Joes throughout the year.
Yeah, call Joe, we have a name. Thank you, thank you for that. I've got Tim and then Christine.
No, I think, yeah, it's good on a thematic approach, so that, you know, what you're talking about, Shonad. He's the right way to go, but also we need to say, I don't know, have your say, you've got three minutes, you know, as an individual, because otherwise, we know what happens if we don't actually put a timeframe on that potentially we can end up with somebody who takes up 20 minutes and people start dialing out of, you know, it's un-called Joe, because it'll be, it'll be, because some people, usually those that are at the front of the queue will take 25 minutes and everybody else will have zoomed out by then. So we need to, you know, give it a bit of structure, but not so much structure that people don't want to take part. Because just for instance, if people in the street, if you've got three or four people in the street, they can come one after the other, that's fine. It's just not making sure that we don't have one person coming in and then taking over and talking for a long time, and then other members of the public feel disenfranchised on this, disempowered by it. And so we just need to have a slight bit of structure. We need to make sure that we've got topics that people know can come in on and that sort of thing. But I don't think it needs to be too rigid, but we just have to make sure what they're expected to be able to contribute and whether they have a right of reply after, you know, if they've had their three minutes or not. You know, we've just got to work that out, but I think.
Yeah, thanks, Tim. I don't think, you know, let's not, your point about details is important, but let's not try and agree that now. Christine?
Yeah, mine was very similar. It has to be topic-based. And I think we have to bear in mind, why are we doing this? And it's the contribution decision-making that happens in the council. So it's fine getting a load of people to come in and let off steam, which is what it could happen if we're not careful. We also have to be clear, what are we going to do with the information that we've been given? We can't just have them come in, tell us a load of stuff and then pretend it never happened. We have to make sure we follow up in some way. So that's why we have to be quite careful. We can't have a free-for-all, but we can have focused discussions that we could have meaningful outcomes, I would like to suggest. And one example of public engagement that, we've already talked about it today, I didn't come in, but it's about the Tree Partnership. There's loads of Tree Wardens around Sheffield, I'm one. I know loads about what's happening in the Tree Partnership, because I'm on the Tree Warden's list and I go to the meetings. You could get them in, or we could go to them and talk to them and see what it is they want to change. So there are groups of people as well who have really relevant knowledge and expertise that we could also call on. So we don't just have to call on Joe Public, we can call on groups of people that have lots of knowledge of specialist areas that could be really useful.
Thank you, thank you. No, I think the points are very, very well made. I mean, so I think there's a piece of work to do on the details of such a thing, but am I sensing a broad agreement that we do something like this? Sorry, Barbara, sorry, yes, you did raise your hand.
Yeah, thank you, Joe. I mean, going back to glyphosate, what I'm thinking more of, or in addition to what's been discussed, there was a big announcement, how many, gosh, 18 months ago, about the trial, and then a huge gap of information. So I think it'd be quite helpful if there was a slot on our committee page to sort of give an update on some of the announcements that have been made, you know, sort of trial taking place, sort of outcomes should be known, you know, sort of public report expected. Just little timelines so that people aren't, you know, coming to me and I'm having to go to somebody to find out what the latest state is. So that's engagement as well, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. So, I mean, our members broadly agree that we do something like this, but, you know, we need to work out the details in order to have a useful session. Is that fair? Okay, thank you for that. I'll take that as agreed. So that finishes my list of items on the work programme. I did have, there's just a couple of items on the work programme where there's a question mark over where the item falls. And I just would like to ask Legal to go away and clarify. Either clarify or get a decision from Strategy Resources as to, you know, if it's genuinely unclear. I'm thinking particularly of the heat networks question. I know that the question was referred to us, the question that Terry Fox referred to us last year. But arguably, it comes under climate change, but I think it ought to belong here because we do have a heat network already under this committee. But in a sense, it doesn't matter where, I'm not precious about it. It ought to be clear where it sits is the main criteria. So can we ask Legal to go away and either have a form of view which clarifies where it sits or take a steer from Strategy Resources to say it shall sit here or it shall sit there? Energy, heat networks as well. The other one was hostile vehicle mitigations, there's a question mark under that. Again, I do think it sits with us, as it is done for the purpose of emergency, the emergency plan of anti-terror measures, which are, which do sit under us, is not done for the purposes of transport. So I don't believe it sits under transport, but I think that needs to be, that steer needs to be clear, otherwise issues might come in. It may even also sit under the Planning and Highways Committee if it has impacts on rights of way, I would have thought. But again, the policy drive is to protect us from hostile vehicles. And therefore, my view is the policy sits under us, but I can't, if we can have that clarified. All right, so with those, Mark, yes?
Thanks, Joe. I was kind of reflecting on the matters that councillor Masters raised about feedbacks on where we're at with positions that we've taken and decisions we've taken within this committee. But also the really helpful feedback that you gave us from the Strategy Committee. One thing that is missing from our agenda here that we could probably do with something on would be updates from officers as to cross-cutting decisions that have been taken by other committees and their upcoming. Because you're quite right, when it comes to the implications on the climate change elements and the district network, we need to know what other committees have done that we would not necessarily be cited on or that could slip under the agenda, and also to make sure that we have a holistic view of all the decision-making processes as we go. So it almost feels like, though I get the agenda as it is set here, it needs a bit of tweaking to include additional ongoing themes of what's been asked previously, where we're at and where we think we can bring this back, just to kind of make sure that things do stay live and we do know what's going on with them. But also a specific report on what other risks we face as a committee so that we can get that clarification, because actually the district heating network absolutely fits with us. It sits with us and no one else, because we are ones responsible for dealing with what goes into that district heating network. So others may make aspirational choices, we will need to implement them. So some information on that is going to need to be worked on for sure.
Mike?
Thank you, Chair. You did a couple of minutes ago mention Planning and Highways Committee. I think it's important to remember that that is a regulatory board, it's not a policymaking board, so the issue probably wouldn't actually affect planning directly.
It was an idle thought, Mike, that if we put in a bollard on a road that is a right of way to prevent vehicles going down it, are we interfering with those rights of way in a manner that would be, the planning highways would have to agree that that right of way no longer applies. I mean, it was an idle thought. I don't think we need to go into it now. I'm sure Legal will involve planning highways when it needs to be, when it needs to be involved. So apologize for distracting us all with my idle thoughts. Yeah, Mark, your point is well made. It speaks to the way committees work together, doesn't it? And Shonad's earlier point about the references from Strategy Resources coming towards is also relevant to that. I think the points are well made. I don't know if there's a process solution that we can ask for that will do that. Perhaps we can refer to the Governance Committee, that a process solution might be needed. No?
It just needs to happen, doesn't it? No, I'm sorry, speaking as, in the past, being a committee clerk, then you just knew, you would ask the next morning or the next day, what happened at your committee yesterday? Was there anything I need? And then you would bring it to your committee at the next meeting. And if it was that day, then you were demonstrating how swift you had been. But, you know, I just think this whole notion of we have to wait for the next committee because we'd got our agenda out or something, when all you're doing is saying, here's what this committee's asked you to do. And then it's not a difficult thing to do. It's, you know, that's how committees get a reputation for being dead slow if stuff waits, you know, each time. You know, an oral report would be fine if that's what it takes, but it doesn't take two minutes, does it, to just put on a sheet of paper, this is what was recommended from the committee that met yesterday?
Yes, thank you. Point well made. Can, do you think we can ask Democratic Services to take that point away and see if that can happen? Thank you. Okay, are we happy with the work programme as it stands now, following that discussion? Can that be agreed? Thank you. I'll take silence as a sent. Yes, okay, work programme is agreed. Agenda item number eight, Revenue Budget Monitoring Report. Do we have an officer, Jane Wilby, is that you? Please come and introduce yourself and the report. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. So the purpose of this report is to update the committee with the general fund outturn position for the council of 2022/23. The full report was presented to the Finance Committee last week on the 13th of June, and the summarised version is being presented to each of the individual policy committees. So some members may have seen me quite recently in other committees. The outturn paper supports our annual statement of accounts. A draft set has been produced in line with our statutory deadlines and will for the 31st of May, and will be presented to the Audit and Standards Committee tomorrow. So the headlines are, in 2022/23, the general fund overspent by £5 million against a net revenue budget of £450 million. This meant an unplanned draw from reserves to meet the in-year deficit. In 21/22, we identified a £70 million risk reserve from general fund reserves that we were able to draw on to manage that risk associated with the delivery of our budgets and savings plans. In 21/22, we used £20 million of that to cover the overspend. We used £15 million when we set the budget in 22/23. So really, the draw from the risk reserve in 22/23 was more like £20 million again, which leaves us £30 million as we move into 23/24 to manage further risk associated with delivery of this year's budget. The closing position did improve significantly throughout the year from a position of overspend of more than £20 million during the first part of the year, down to £5 million as we closed. The tables on page 40 of the pack show the improvement each month and which committees contributed towards that improvement. The Adult Social Care Committee improved by £6 million throughout the year. That was mainly due to additional funding we received in the winter discharge funding, which was announced in November 22. The Transport, Regen and Climate improved by £2.5 million. This was due to a mitigation of an unachievable saving through a one-off provision. The Strategy and Resources Committee saw additional income into that committee budget and improved by £4.5 million in the year. So we did receive additional income from investments on our cash balances. So when we did set the treasury management strategy, that was before the start of the Ukraine war. So the subsequent spike in interest rates saw a good yield on some of the cash that we invested. We also had some money in from the business rate levy surplus into that committee. So the main reasons for the overspend were shortfalls in budget delivery plans in year. Of the £52 million set out in to balance the budget, we recorded £19.5 that weren't delivered in year. One-off mitigations of £6.5 offset some of those delivery challenges and the inflationary uplifts that we saw in 22/23. On page 41, I talk about the uplift in energy prices. We saw over 100% increase in prices across the council, and this resulted in over a £5 million increase to our energy bills each year, this year. So we covered that by drawing down from provisions that we'd accounted for in previous periods. On page 42, that highlights the main committee overspend in the year. So we had £5.7 million overspend in adults. Lots of that was due to home care, but we have seen an improvement post-COVID recovery, and we've been spending a lot of time reviewing packages and improvements are coming into that particular committee's budget. There was £5.8 million overspend in the children's budgets. The issues really are there in the residential children's strategy, in transport and high-cost placements. We did also have an overspend against our budget in the housing revenue account due to a significant backlog in repairs and the state of the stock that we've got at the moment, plus loss of rent from vacant properties. So on section 1.4, we talk about the waste and street scene budget in particular. So the position was £300,000 underspent against a net budget of £55 million for the committee. So the majority of the budget does sit with the waste and highways contracts. So we saw major inflation pressures in the year, and we've got those going into next year. So the paper does note the contract inflation, which is linked to our PIX, which will be 12.6%, which will apply to these contracts for 23/24. So whilst we've seen a fall in recent months, the committee will see those pressures in the budgets. We did have an overspend in the highways division, but upside in the parking services division. So it's often difficult to predict the demand and income in parking, but this overperformance in this budget area can be used to offset some of those highways costs. So overall, the expenditure budgets for the committee are £141 million. So a £300,000 underspend actually represents quite good management in the overall context, and it's less than half percent variation from the net budget. So the recommendation is for the committee to note the outturn position for 22/23, and the next committee budget update will be September, which will be the 23/24 quarter one outturn position. So I'm happy to take any questions if anybody's got any. Thank you.
No, thank you for that. Obviously, I thank you for your praise for our budget management for the year. Obviously, I attribute it to the officers who've delivered that. If no questions from members, I do have a question while you're here. I'm conscious that this time, I'm sorry, I've seen Shonad. Go on, you go first.
I just wanted to ask, and I'm not sure if I didn't hear you, and apologies, about energy costs which appear to be going down again. Is that going to show, manifest itself in our budgets this year? And against the fact that all those other bits there on page 44 are going up?
Yeah, I think I'm just.
Yeah, um, I think I'm just scrolling to the page, on page forty-one, um, there's a, a little table that shows you the year-on-year increase. So last year we saw over a hundred percent in gas and electricity costs. Whereas this year, when we've come to set the budget, we've accounted for a five percent in gas and thirty percent in electricity. So those contracts have already been signed and, um, you know, we've got certainty over the prices up until the end of the year. Um, I'm not sure actually when the contract does expire, but we've certainly got the, the cover on that. So that's what's been built into the twenty-three, twenty-four budget.
Yes, thank you for that, I, I do recall the paper went to Strategy and Resources on, on energy buying, it was, it was extremely complex and it didn't have any, it didn't, we had some numbers in, but not numbers that told you how much we were paying for our energy, so, uh, yeah. Um, grateful not to, not to know about any more about that than I do. Um, sorry, uh, Mark, did you indicate?
Uh, thanks Chair, um, kind of a more broader question. In terms of the cash reserves and such that the council holds, are we expecting an increase on those reserves and potential yields for interest with the increasing interest rates that are ongoing? Is there any potential upside to the council that can mitigate some of our pressures?
That's been built into this year's budget, so I think, um, this year we did see a, a good upside in, in the income that we had in. We were holding higher cash balances than usual, we've actually made a prepayment against our pension fund to reduce the future ongoing costs. So we've, we've depleted some of our cash reserves there. Um, but as I said, when we set the budget for twenty-two, twenty-three, it was before the spike of interest rates. So actually we did see some really good returns where we were previously getting next to nothing. Um, but when we've come to set the budget this year, obviously we had that knowledge, so we have built that into the budget. So it's already accounted for, unfortunately, Mark.
Um, thanks, so, I mean, the question is, I mean, obviously a year ago, by now, we'd had dire warnings about the budget process for, for this year, setting this year's budget as we did last year. Um, and we've not had this this year, and I, I'm, I'm slightly baffled as to why that is, whether, whether there's, there's a strategy for managing members' input to the budget process that doesn't involve frightening us yet, but will involve frightening us soon? Or whether actually the position is, is not as, not as desperate as it was last year? I don't know if, if, if you can yet reveal to us which of those it is.
Thank you, so, um, there has been a briefing with leaders, uh, with the leader, I think, last week on the proposed budget timetable. Um, the medium-term financial analysis was presented to S L B, um, earlier this week actually. So the, um, over the June to October period, um, departments and officers will develop some of those budget help, you know, support committees to develop some of those budget proposals and targets. So we have got a draft out there at the moment, so that will be communicated with each of the committees in due course. So it'll, it'll be coming soon, Chair.
Right, um, can you give us any indication of how bad it is?
I think I would prefer to let, um, the Director of Finance and Commercial Services deliver that news directly. I, I think early indications are it's probably not going to be quite as challenging as last year. But of course, we are moving into the next year on top of two years that we've not delivered our budget. So we've had twenty million overspend in twenty-one, twenty-two, another one in twenty-two, twenty-three effectively using that fifteen million. And actually, we, we can't continue like that. So we need to be consolidating those slipped savings and making sure we deliver on those budgets from the previous two years. So it might not be quite as challenging, we've, we've, we might be thinking of a different approach as to how we work with the policy committees to set budgets this year. But of course, that's going to be going to Strategy and Resources Committee first before that overall process will be set out.
Okay, thank you very much, that's, that's, that's kind of what, what I wanted to know. Excellent, thank you, um, if there are no further comments on this report, can we agree it, I'll take silence as the assent of the meeting? Yes, that's agreed, thank you very much Jane. Um, the next item on the agenda is the Hackney Carriage Vehicle License Policy. Um, if we can have Craig and Daniel if you want to come and, um, introduce yourselves, introduce the report. And in introducing the report, if you can address yourself to the question asked by Mr Martin regarding the use of grab handles, um, that would be helpful. Um, if you're, if any members are unclear what I'm talking about, yes, okay. Um, well, I, can I leave it to officers to explain, explain the question and the answer, thank you.
Uh, yeah, good morning everybody, I'm Craig Harper from the Licensing Service, I'm a policy officer. Um, this is my colleague, I'll introduce himself, he's going to introduce the report.
Yeah, thank you Chair, uh, morning all, my name's Daniel Parler, Licensing, Strategy and Policy Officer. Um, so the purpose of this report is to seek approval to make a minor technical amendment to the Hackney Carriage Vehicle specification. It is recommended that the proposed amendment is approved and comes into force with immediate effect. Uh, this committee approved the Hackney Carriage Vehicle License Policy on fifteenth of February twenty-twenty-three, uh, which was then implemented on the first of March twenty-twenty-three. Subsequent amendment to the specification was approved by the committee on the twenty-second of March twenty-twenty-three. Licensing Services subsequently being made aware that one aspect of the vehicle specification inadvertently prevents a common type of reloading vehicle that is Clean Air Zone compliant uh, from being ordinarily licensed, ordinarily licensed as a Hackney Carriage vehicle. Uh, the council's test station manager has confirmed that should grab handles be installed on certain vehicles, then the effectiveness of airbags may be compromised, which would therefore put passengers in danger of being seriously injured. Uh, following this feedback, the Licensing Services made an amendment which will permit this particular type of ve- reloading vehicle to be ordinarily licensed as a Hackney Carriage vehicle within the parameters of the policy and without the need to be referred to the Licensed Subcommittee as is currently the case with approximately a three to six week waiting period to be heard. Uh, the amendment that has been made to the following section of the policy, uh, so it's a passenger compartment section. We've removed the requirement for reloading wheelchair accessible vehicles to be fitted with grab handles at the door entrance. Details of the proposed amendments can be seen with track changes at appendix A of the report. And I'll now pass you over to my colleague Craig to address some of the issues raised by disability Sheffield.
Thank you Chair, so, yeah, James Martin, putting a, a public question about the use of grab handles and how we'd like to see them maintained on, on these types of vehicles, so just to touch on some points that he made. So the requirement for grad handle, grab handle, sorry, will still be required on the side loading vehicles, which are usually higher, the floors higher. Um, people have to manoeuvre themselves throughout the passenger compartment to, to take, take their seats, many of which are flip-up seats as well, which causes, um, more difficulty for certain passengers. Um, reloading vehicles, uh, have a more compact passenger area akin to that of a private hire vehicle. There's no requirement for grab handles in those types of vehicles. Um, some reloading vehicles, as my colleague just mentioned, such as the V W Caddy, do not and cannot have grab handles installed due to the reasons that my colleague just mentioned, compromising safety of passengers should, should the airbag, um, be deployed. And there's, there's, there's no way of actually attaching the grab handles to these vehicles for that very reason. Um, where reloading vehicles are manufactured with grab handles or converted with grab handles, it will be expected they remain in place and not removed or altered. Um, presently, we've got seven vehicles that have been granted an exemption by the Licensing Subcommittee um, to not have grab handles installed. There's usually a four to five week turnaround for that period, so that means that certain licensees are waiting longer than they really should be to get those licensed on the road and serve in the general public. Um, we've got around thirty reloading vehicles that we've now got licensed, um, since the policy was, policy was passed in February and then subsequently altered in March. Um, reloading vehicles currently account for six percent of the fleet and we're seeing an increase, um, week on, week on that. We've actually got three vehicles waiting to be licensed that don't comply due to not having grab handles. So should members be minded not to pass the policy today, they will be referred to the Licensing Subcommittee where the likelihood is they'll be granted a licence to operate. Thank you, Chair.
Um, uh, thank you, I mean, I, I bristled slightly at the suggestion that if we, uh, you know, if we don't agree, then you'll have it anyway. But, um, no, I understand, I understand the reasons for that. Um, comments or questions from members? Um, obviously, Mark and then Tim, I think, Mark.
Thank you Joe, I'm not sure, just elbow Tim out of the way, sorry mate. Um, um, for, for me, this, this seems like a sensible suggestion where basically we've got members of the taxi trade whose income has been hit dramatically over recent years. Uh, I'm not having to wait and take a period of time where they're not getting income to support their families. So it feels like it's a sensible attempt to streamline the system and allow people to ply trade. Uh, and any delays to that will actually have unintended consequences on delivery of transport for those with disabilities who need them. So I'm broadly supportive of this. As long as we keep reviewing the process in the field and make sure that what we're doing is the best that we can do, then, then I don't have any issues with this at all. Uh, so I'm, I'm supportive of this, thank you Joe.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, I support this, I've been, uh, when I, I, I actually read through twice to look for any more track changes on, on your modification. I'm glad for the explanation, I'm, I'm, I'm happy to second if Mark's put a proposal in on that, um, with, with all the provisos, thank you.
Um, thank you, so, I mean, yes, I, I, I'm, I'm happy to, uh, agree these, this, this, this paper today. I mean, the, the question I think that, uh, Mr Martin was raising, I, he does need to be, I, it does merit um, careful consideration and it relates to the ability of getting, uh, getting in and out of a, a passenger compartment if you have a mobility issue but you're not in a wheelchair. And I suppose it strikes me that we're obviously, we're striking a balance. We believe we're improving accessibility generally by allowing another type of Hackney carriage when we don't have the number of Hackney carriages we would like. And that because we have a, a policy that all Hackney carriages are wheelchair accessible, you know. So, um, that, it is about striking the correct balance. Now we could, um, as you said, we don't require grab handles in private hire vehicles. We could take the view that grab, grab handles are that important, that there need to be more of them. But then we could say, well, let's, let's require them in private hire vehicles, couldn't we? And we could do that before we did it in Hackney carriages. I don't know if that, if that makes sense, that that would be, that would be the first place to go to require grab handles, given that there is a much wider range of vehicles available to be private hire vehicles and you can just pick one that's got grab handles. Um, if you're, if you're registering a new vehicle. I'm not suggesting we do that, but I'm saying that if we were to take the view that grab handles are that important, that would be the logical place to go. Does that make sense? I don't know if you, you know, want to comment on that?
It makes perfect sense, I thi, I think the issue that me and Dan have found, um, discussing this with the trade and the, the testing station manager is that as more ve, newer vehicles come onto the market, the safety kind of requirements become that much more, such as curtain airbags that come down to protect people from, um, smashed glass, hitting the heads on the pillars. And that's, that's where these grab handles would ordinarily be installed. So what we're conscious of is not to reduce the pool of available vehicles that people can go out and purchase. So i- i- it would need a lot more kind of work on our behalf and evidence gathering to look at, is, is it even possible to have these certain types of grab handles installed on private hire vehicles? And then looking to extend that to Hackney, should that be the case.
Okay, so thanks for that, so, um, I've asked for a meeting with Mr Martin and Licensing just to, just to hear him out, because I think it's important we do that. But I am satisfied that this is a, this is the correct decision to make today. So, um, if there are no further comments or questions from members, can we agree the report? I'll take silence as the assent of the meeting? Yeah, yeah, that's agreed, thank you all very much, thank you Craig and Daniel. Um, item ten, food safety plan, um. Do you want to, uh, thank you, do you want to come and introduce yourselves and the report?
Hello Chair and members of the committee, uh, I'm Ian Ashmore, I'm the Head of Service for Environmental regs and Licensing. Uh, I'm also an environmental health officer.
I'm Louise Ashton, I'm Principal Officer with, uh, Sheffield Trading Standards in the commercial team which deals with, uh, food standards enforcement.
Hello, I'm Jennifer Marshall, I'm Food Safety Manager in Environmental Regulation.
Okay, so I'll, I'll, obviously it's a fairly long work plan here and a significant report, so I'll, I'll just take you through some highlights. Uh, my colleagues are here who've got very particular technical expertise, if, if you've got any very specific questions that we can cover. Um, but in general terms, I think it's fair to say that prior to lockdown occurring, the model that we had in Sheffield for dealing with what was quite modest funding, where we used, um, in-house staff for the highest risk work and we also used contractors for, um, lower risk work, had actually been working quite well. And prior to lockdown in twenty nineteen, we delivered, or the team had delivered, um, the best results that Sheffield had had in about fifteen years overall. Uh, I'm not saying it was all perfect, we were still talking to the F S A, but we'd got, um, the, the best results in terms of the lowest backlog overall. Um, COVID had a major impact, as I'm sure you'll all be aware, with many businesses closing, many businesses, uh, didn't reopen. Um, a lot of our staff, our food qualified staff, are specialists in infectious disease control as well. Um, so there, there were real challenges there. Um, the F S A gave us major flexibility during that period in terms of the national and local work programmes and what we had to do. And we made full use of those. Um, and we largely delivered in line with the, the work programme. We didn't finish everything, but in terms of the F S A flexibilities, we, uh, we did deliver much of that. However, starting this year and with this plan, we are back to, um, business as usual. All bets are off in terms of the flexibility. So we have a very significant work programme that we have to deliver. That's compounded by the fact that the team are having, uh, finding immense challenges in, um, securing compliance with businesses. Um, all the problems that we've all got as domestic customers with bills going up are compounded with lots of the smaller businesses where they've got that at home and they've also got it in the business. So the team are really doing what they can to support businesses through this, working closely with business Sheffield. But what it has meant is, uh, certainly last year, uh, you'll see in the report that, that there was a huge increase in the number of businesses that had to be closed. Um, you know, normally it's a fairly small number, the team work really carefully with people. But, um, there are so many marginal businesses now, so that's taking more time. So, um, the, the summary, I suppose, is that the, the work plan you've got in front of you shows what the gaps are. But, but actually the plan shows how we would cover those gaps and we would deliver it. But what we are doing is flagging up straight away that we think there is a problem with what the contractor can achieve. Um, the contractors, uh, will be allocated that work, but we, we just think there are not the staff nationally that can now deliver that level of work. A lot of environmental health officers haven't returned, uh, to the profession after lockdown. Um, a lot of them got completely burnt out with the, the work they did during COVID. A lot of the contractors haven't returned. Um, and as a result, there, there isn't the workforce. So what we've, we've, we're flagging now, rather than coming to you halfway through the year, what we're flagging to you now is, we need to be realistic about this because rather than there being increase in public health risks, um, w- we need to provide the staffing internally. Um, so the proposal in there that, that you'll see is that, uh, as officers, um, the proposal is that there is, that, that we are doing recruitment uh, and we will have to cover those increased costs across the broader street scene and regulation service. Um, but to deliver to the national standard and, and reduce risk, we will have to, um, do that recruitment. It's the only way that we can, um, that we can actually deliver. Um, and what I can say on the recruitment is that, that we have done recruitment in the last, uh, couple of weeks. And we know that for permanent jobs, there are actually staff out there and we have people lined up. So, um, the, the other thing to briefly say, um, is that we, we, throughout this, we take a risk-based approach and we deal with highest risk work and most of the higher risk work has been done. Um, it's, it's the, the more lower risk work generally that we are struggling to deal with. Um, the other thing I need to mention as well is that we're not just sitting back saying, well, look, we can't get the staff, you know, that's, that's, that's the end of it. We're doing everything we can to mitigate any public health risks. So colleagues, for example, have, um, arranged for if we can't get qualified staff, we've got very experienced regulatory officers who, um, have, have had additional training. So for example, they're going into businesses to, um, give them advice ahead of inspection. So we're giving them the packs to say, look, you, you, this is not your formal inspection, but you need to get on to this. Um, you know, we're, we're, we're having to close a lot of businesses, these are the reasons why businesses are having to close. Make sure you're dealing with, you know, the pest control and things like that. So that, we, we're doing what we can and there's other work being done this week, like mail shots and, and visiting them and things like that. But we think with the plan and the recruitment that we've proposed, that gives us the chance to get back on target. Um, the F S A are closely monitoring us and other councils, it's fair to say we're not alone in this, most of the big unitries are, are, are struggling. Um, I think our model was, was, was a, a particularly blended model with contractors. And we always had a small in-house team, but others are facing these problems. Uh, but we, we have it in our grasp now to be, and our, and our ability to be able to solve this fairly quickly with the recruitment of the additional staff. So I'll just pause there, if, if you want me to go into any more detail, my colleagues can provide a any more detail, my colleagues can provide any more detail, will, but I thought you might want to ask a few questions on it. So is that okay for now?
Thank you. Yes, no, thank you for that. Yeah, I'll open up to questions from members. Before I do, I think it might be useful, just because, I mean, it strikes me that you've got two strands to this. You've got the food hygiene and food standards strands to this. And reading the paper, it strikes me that the volume in hygiene, in terms of the amount of inspections, the amount of work, is greater substantially than standards. You have more people doing it and more inspections and so on. To what extent is that driven by the relative risks in those fields, and to what extent is it by the amount of work it takes to do an individual inspection or a piece of work, and to what extent is it the kind of regulatory environment we're in that demands more in one round the other?
I'll just do an overview, and then my colleagues might do. So the inspection programmes are led by the FSA guidance. So whatever the FSA guidance dictates, we will try and do that, and we will try and follow that. There is some overlap in the work in terms of the hygiene visits will check on things like cross-contamination. We are looking at for this year and moving forward with new staff we take on and giving them training so that they can do more of the two areas. Standards came from that training standards background with metrology and standards and food safety, you know, that wider thing. So the officers often have different training pathways to get to that. But I think moving forward, we're doing more of a blended approach. The highest-risk training standards, standards-type ones, would be often your manufacturers, of which we don't have tremendous numbers in Sheffield. But also, the training standards with the lower-risk ones with traditional, I think it's fair to say, it's proved very difficult to get to some of the lower-risk ones, hasn't it? I don't know whether you want to add anything else particularly in those ones?
I just wanted to sort of say that in terms of the code of practice, the requirements are equal in terms of standards inspections and food hygiene inspections. However, we have a, as you've touched on, it's the risk inherent in those premises which determines whether they are high risk or low. And we have far fewer high-risk premises overall in standards than we do in hygiene because of the types of issues that we find in particular premises. So for standards, we have about 30, 30-odd high-risk inspections to achieve in the year, and they are, as Ian's already touched on, those manufacturing premises where they have a national distribution network. Whereas in food, hygiene, the higher-risk inspections will be the, sort of more like the takeaways of sort of food businesses in Sheffield, where the risks in terms of hygiene are much greater, and the numbers of premises where those risks are present are much greater in food hygiene.
Thank you, thank you. Yes, no, I was a student in this city many years ago, and the dodgy kebab was a known risk at the end of a night out. Okay, I've got Mark, and then Barbara.
Thank you, Joe. The thought of a dodgy kebab, I think we've all had one of them at some stage. The financial uncertainties that many businesses face at the moment, I'm guessing is, and you might be able to attest to this, is turning, leading to a greater turnover of businesses. So I'm guessing we've got a double-edged issue here, that the economic uncertainties are meaning that businesses are closing, and then having to reopen under a new leadership management, and then leading to more work for you guys. I'm guessing from your notes that that is something you're getting at the moment. And the other element I'd like to, because that obviously increases your workload, so that comes to resources and capacity to an extent. But also, what information are we getting back from, say, NHS partners and others where people are presenting after that dodgy kebab at A&amp;E with dodgy gastric issues and other things? Is that something we're monitoring? Are we seeing increases in those incidents? And also the elements about, is there any greater burden on food allergies that you perceive going forward that will put an even greater stress and burden on the service that you provide? And are we going to be well set to deliver that?
Yeah, sorry, there was a lot of questions in there. What was the first one, sorry?
It's about, are we seeing increasing takeaway turnovers coming under new management, and is that adding to our workload and risk that we have?
No, we absolutely are. I mean, we'll get applications from people and go and take them a pack, and they're already deciding that they can't manage to run the business, which is very different than the picture that we were having before Covid. So what we're trying to do is take them information, linking them into Business Sheffield at the same time, so that we've at least given them a chance to, you know, to see maybe where there's other areas in their business where they might be able to keep it going. Yeah, businesses are struggling, certainly all of them. In terms of allergies or allergens, we are working together, the two teams are working together, so that the food hygiene team now includes allergen questions in all of our visits. We give advice to new businesses and to existing businesses. So we hope that we've got to even before anything starts to go wrong, and that's part of inspection. It's anticipated that the new code of practice for food hygiene, the code of practice for food standards is changing this year, and the food hygiene one's in consultation. And it's anticipated that allergens will be specifically mentioned in that for hygiene visits as well as for standards visits. So it is becoming part of the general work of our team.
Do you mind if I just add to that? There's been a change to the code of practice for food standards this year. We've only just got that. That came out on the 8th of June. What that's meant is that the Food Standards Agency have changed the way that we are going to be risking premises going forward. It means that we will be looking more at an intelligence-based risk matrix approach to risking premises for food standards. In the code, there's a lot of emphasis on allergens as a risk priority. And it looks as though where a business fails on a particular area, standards area, then that will automatically become a higher priority. So potentially, I think, where, potentially, I think, some businesses where we will now be going forward risk rating those businesses, may, there may be an increased burden in terms of premises that fall into that high priority because of an allergen's risk. You mentioned also the reporting mechanisms for hospitals. That's something that we certainly need to improve within the city. We are working on that. We will be working on it this year. Again, the code specifically mentions reporting mechanisms from organisations where there's been a near miss. And it is something we recognise that really needs to be improved within the city. So that's something that we will be working on this year.
Thank you. Mike?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Ian and colleagues, for this report. It does go into quite a lot of detail. Clearly, we are becoming, allergies seem to be growing amongst our species. And that does seem to have become quite topical in the news recently. So it is clearly something that we're going to have to reckon with in the coming years. Whether there's anything that can be done to de-risk, de-risk people rather than de-risk businesses is probably going to be problematic. Well, that is problematic. I am pleased to see that you are looking at succession planning, and that you've already got, you're looking at a range of apprentice options. Because I think, really, we do need to make sure that there is a next generation there that is properly trained up to replace those who are wanting to leave the business or retire. Can you say a bit more about what proposals you have got in the pipeline? Because I know this was raised at committee last year, that we needed to prepare for this.
Yeah, absolutely. I think it's a challenge for certainly the whole of environmental health and trading standards as professions. Sheffield, like many cities, had a fantastic training programme, going back probably, you know, 15 years in earlier, you know, large numbers of students. But during austerity, unfortunately, a lot of those were cut. More recently, what we've done is, it can be a very long period to get EHOs and training standards officers trained. And we have identified some courses where you can just focus on the food part rather than some of the wider parts. So I think we're probably one of the only councils where one of our pest control officers, a team leader, actually has now become food qualified as well. So that blend of pest control and food hygiene and standards, one person has got that skill, so they are starting to do some work in the team. So that was a bit of a test case to see how good that course was. And, you know, it was difficult because some of it was during Covid, but that person's come through that. So there's one example of something that we've done in practical terms for that. But we are looking at taking on other apprentices. The four-year course at Leeds was suspended for a time. It does, you can use the levy on it, but there was a few problems on it, and it's now back running. So that's something that we are looking at. And there are various other options. So we've also recently had, well, in the discussions that we've carried on after Covid, discussing things across the region with colleagues and with the LJ, and one of the things, for example, was getting more of these courses so that they're on the apprentice levy. So it seemed crazy to us that there's a national shortage of staff, and yet some of the food certificate courses, well, in fact, all the food certificate courses were not subject to the apprentice levy. So there was a mismatch. So that's been communicated to the Food Standards Agency as a result of, you know, the local group. And we would hope to see some change on that. So there are some structural issues nationally that are frustrating this. And obviously, there are local issues that we're doing. I don't know.
Okay.
Just picking up on the University of Leeds, I just wonder with two very good universities in Sheffield, whether either of them are running food-related courses that could link in with this kind of work?
No, there's a specific qualification, and neither of the universities are winning it at the moment. We have had discussions with them, and they haven't taken us up on anything so far. But we are getting good feedback from the Leeds course, and we have been discussing with Leeds. Certainly, our housing colleagues are taking apprentices on to that course at the moment. So we're in discussion with them, and we've been training their apprentices. So there are actually already two apprentices going through the general system.
Excellent. Have you finished, Mike?
Yeah, just one follow-up. It's really to get an understanding, clearly there's a problem here. We're not alone. Other local authorities have this too. Are we outliers in Sheffield, or are we bobbing along in the middle, or are we actually performing quite, yeah, are we actually performing quite well? I was trying to get a handle on.
Prior to Covid, it was a bit easier to do some of the assessments on that, because the food figures were a bit more visible. I think at the minute, the unrated premises that we got and the turnover that we've been talking about, we do seem to have a particularly high percentage of smaller businesses in Sheffield, smaller food businesses that are particularly vulnerable. And as a result of that, we've got this really, really high churn rate, which actually is an incredibly high rate, way above in other businesses, I think. So I think currently the unrated would be something that the Food Standards Agency would have probably, you know, more concern about. But again, hopefully with the programme that we've got, and the extra resource and the extra staff, that gives us a much better chance of clawing that back. But, you know, you'll see from the figures that there are some, you know, things like the ability to visit a new business within that first month of it opening. Again, we're not alone on that, but with the churn rate in businesses, that's a lot of them to visit, so that figure will be higher.
Yeah, certainly this Food Standards Agency are questioning us monthly on the level of unrated businesses that we're not getting to. So we are really concerned that that's something that we've got to deal with. We know that that's an area that is likely to be really high risk for us and for businesses.
Thank you, thank you. So I've got Barbara, Shannon and Tim on my list. I don't know if there are any others indicated. Barbara?
Thank you, Chair. Two separate questions. First of all, on page 87, oh, actually, I want to congratulate you because for the whole report, you're very proactive as opposed to reactive, and that's such a refreshing change. So well done for that. I mean, but on that, you said that, page 87, 1.310, you're using enforcement officers to visit low-risk businesses with a detailed questionnaire. Now, I'm assuming that means that low-risk businesses are those that sell rat food, you know, and they're, but so I'm trying to work out what a low-risk business is, and why do you think a questionnaire is suitable when we know full well that anybody can fit in a questionnaire to suit what they perceive to be the outcome? So it's reassurance, that's the first question.
The businesses that are already classified as low-risk are businesses that we will have visited, so we don't just classify them as low-risk. So there will be places, sort of cake makers, shops just selling sweets, that sort of, you know, nothing sort of that you would recognise as a high-risk food. So they were things that are at the very, very bottom of our risk level. And there is a flexibility in the legislation that allows us, every other inspection, to use a questionnaire to see if anything's changed in those businesses. So it's not that we've never seen them and we don't intend to see them. You know, we do recognise that things change. And part of the question, and the inspection stops at that point, is has anything changed? And if it has, then automatically we do visit it. So it's a flexibility, but we are very aware that things do change, and we're very careful that, you know, we need to know exactly what's happening in that business. And if it's something different, then we do change it.
Thank you for clarifying. Now, the second bit, I'm not sure how to pose this, because my understanding is your emphasis is on making sure that no business offers a threat to the public. And yet, you're talking about food standards, and on certain, like page 89, risk analysis and dotted through the thing, you're talking about nutritional value. And food standards, to me, encompasses everything, where I'm not so sure that in your brief, that does cover nutrition. And even though I appreciate it is an issue, I'm just wondering sort of why food standards, the quality of the food, nutritional value is sort of feeding into sort of this report. Thank you. That's all.
Don't want to comment on that yet. So food standards, the quality composition and quality composition of labelling of food, of which nutrition is a part of that. I think the emphasis in this report is on the areas where we perceive them to be the greatest risk to consumers. That's why allergens is a particular focus for us, because we know that there is very high-profile deaths across the country from allergens. We know that there's a big push regionally and nationally. We know that there's a big push regionally and nationally on allergens from the Food Standards Agency and our colleagues in other local authority areas also prioritise allergens as a focus for food standards. Another area where food standards is priorities in food fraud, so where we have substitution of, deliberate substitution of products for inferior ones or cheaper products, that also is a priority area. So nutrition, there have been some changes to nutrition and the availability of nutrition information over the years. However, in terms of the risk to the public, in terms of the nutrition element of it, we've not prioritised that as a greater risk than or as equal risk to the allergens and the food fraud work. So that's why, it is there in food standards, but it's not something that is part of our bread and butter day-to-day. We get so many complaints otherwise.
No, I thought you had enough on without actually sort of trying to sort of change the food habits of sort of, you know, that's developed over sort of generations. But so it's sort of, it's an acknowledgement that it could be an issue, but it's not, it doesn't involve your today.
I think we do appreciate that, you know, that nutrition information is very important to consumers and, you know, it does support the health of the nation if nutrition information is available. And I think the making nutrition available to consumers in takeaway premises has highlighted some of the poor nutritional content to some of the food that is available. So it is important, yeah.
I mean, I would understand that you're interested that the food is what it says on the label, you know, that's, and that part of that is nutritional content, not you ought to be eating this and you haven't ought to be eating that. It's not, it's not the public health messaging that you're dealing with. It's are they selling what they purport to be selling, which is clearly a standards issue, isn't it? So I think it's, yeah. You can see how this comes out of trading standards as opposed to food safety, can't you? But obviously, as you say, the allergen stuff is critical safety stuff. Have you finished, Barbara? Thank you.
Because it's public perception, when you sort of read things like nutrition, food standards, exactly what your remit is. And that's exactly what I expected it to be, but I just wanted to be sure. Thank you.
Thank you. Shannon.
Thank you, Chair. I'm just thinking that this seems to have been a perennial problem about recruitment of EHOs or whatever, the current phrases. And I just wondered, is there a national scheme campaign? Are there enough places at colleges? Are people not attempting to enter the profession because I don't know whether pay isn't good enough or it doesn't sound as exciting as, I don't know, some other? I mean, I think perhaps if you'd told me when I was at school that I could have a job as a cream cake taster or tester, I might have found it, you know, something I would have wanted to go in for. Is it, it just always seems to have been a perennial problem ever since I can remember in local government, not enough places, not enough whatever, or not enough people wanting to do it?
I think there is a series of issues. One of the biggest ones, I think, was the loss of training places and the budget reductions that got worse. I mean, that started in the 90s. You know, as an example, I got a graduate training scheme in an authority and that was really common then. Everyone doing the course generally had a link with an authority and Sheffield had a big programme. I didn't do it at Sheffield and I know it was the same in many councils and I know certainly many colleagues had that. But the reduction in those funded places meant that you were relying on people doing it as any other degree. And, you know, similarly in trading standards, there were reductions as well. We had a really good trading standards programme. So then you're just competing against all the other degrees. But, you know, strange little things like there used to be certainly in Sheffield, Stephfield used to do a thing with school sixth formers called Cascade, where you put all, you got asked loads of different questions about what your interests were and it regurgitated sort of jobs that came out.
That's right.
Yeah, and certainly, you know, environmental health obviously came out for mine, you know. And I'd never heard of it and, you know, and it led a lot of people in certainly my school in North Sheffield to go into environmental health, but in terms of now. But one of the things is time, you know, we don't have really the time to go out promoting it. I think these are really interesting jobs. But if you're having to fund yourself and you're not sure, but we are hoping to consider other routes. Yeah.
So I think for trading standards professionals, I think many trading standards professionals kind of seem to come into the profession sort of by accident almost really. And it's perhaps even less well-known than environmental health roles. But certainly, I don't live in Derbyshire rather than Sheffield, but I am doing a talk to our local secondary school in a couple of weeks about the environmental regulation type professions. So I think a little bit somewhere, you know, to try and put it out there as an option for children is really important.
Can I, sorry, I was just thinking more than, you know, you three having to go out and sort the country out, whether there is a national campaign or whether there's a national association of trading standards and environmental health officers who could be promoting it rather than you three having to sort it out?
There is, there are two professional bodies, the Chartered Trading Standards Institute and the Royal Chartered Institute as well. Both do have training programmes. There's a regulatory compliance officer apprenticeship which is currently available, which is being drawn up in association with the Chartered Trading Standards Institute. So there are programmes available. I think it's fair to say that we're just starting to be able to explore those now and look for people to put on those training programmes. There's been certainly a massive gap over the last 10, 15 years in the availability of a suitable training programme. The old traditional trading programmes for trading standards were very expensive and so a lot of local authorities, they fell by the wayside in those years. But things are starting to change now and there are programmes now available that we can use.
Thank you, thank you. Tim.
Perhaps on the last question, should we be looking at Sheffield College and pointing them down roots of these where there are shortages and looking at as ways of making sure they increase their numbers? But that's not what I was really wanting to talk about. I want to ask about allergens and you're talking and the focus that you're putting on there. Have you got, because one of the things is obviously it's a slightly different subject to what people would perceive of food poisoning and, you know, in order for your star rating. Are you looking at any sort of rating system or something that in premises would be able to, allergens be able to point out that they're doing particularly good work or whatever? And so, because I know there's a developing national coming in, but that would be, you know, to point out to people that are worried about food. It's not just allergens, it's about food intolerances as well and those sort of things which people are becoming much more aware of. And whether Sheffield sort of, you know, because you're proactive throughout this and it's just, you're talking about allergens, but whether you're looking at having a scheme where shops and premises with food can, you know, and you can, that they can highlight that they're doing a good job and that they're making sure that across the city, that people, you know, that they can use premises with confidence that they are doing the right thing and that they have been assessed by that. I just wonder if you're going down that route.
I think initially, what we're trying to do is make sure that we've got basic levels of legal compliance. That's really our priority at the present moment in time. We've got a number of premises which we don't think potentially are legally compliant. And so that's where we want to focus our work in the very near future. I think in terms of, there's a distinction to be made between legal compliance and best practice and we know that there are some really good examples of best practice, very good due diligence systems, but that there's a whole spectrum of best practice, whereas we really need to concentrate on making sure that we have basically good compliance at the moment and that businesses are aware of their requirements and know where to look for further information and guidance. The Food Standards Agency already put out free training programmes for businesses which are free to access. And of course, for many businesses who work on social hours, that's a benefit because they can access those at a time which suits that business. However, I think we would like in the long term to look at having a sort of scheme where we have examples of best practice that we can then promote as across the city to drive up standards through all businesses. I think that would be a really lovely idea. And but I think at the moment, we need to concentrate on the very basic legal compliance.
To add that, the new code of practice that's in consultation is including cross-contamination allergens in the scoring. What it isn't doing at the moment is moving it into the food hygiene rating scheme, you know, the sort of star rating that you see on. And part of the consultation that we are returning is to say that, you know, we really think that that should be part of that food hygiene rating scheme. So that would then take that form that people would be able to see in the same way as they can see whether places comply with food hygiene. They would be able to see the same thing for the allergen side. So, yeah, we have met already with the Food Standards Agency and said that verbally, but all of the Yorkshire and Humber local authorities are returning to say that, you know, we really want that to change as well.
Just say thank you very much for that. I mean, it's, I know it's working present, there's a lot of emerging work, there's a body of work that's coming through from across the country and obviously within the city. It's just making sure that, you know, you're not so of burden, but whether there's a scheme where you recognise that. And people do look for, and they do look at the Sheffield City Council to, you know, with their food star ratings when they're, when they're looking at premises. Because, you know, quite often those premises that have massively underperformed will be the ones that are shouting and screaming about why they've, you know, that it's closed their business and, you know, and sometimes you have to say, well, actually, you need to make sure you get the basics right. And with that, but people do look out for that and that's where they, you know, they take their business and that's a good, and I think that can only be a good thing if that is a development that we see in the future.
Mark, hopefully this won't be too long. Going forward, obviously, there's significant pressures on your service as it is and I always feel you're a bit of a Cinderella service and I don't get the attention that you need. So one thing I'd like to know is, obviously, you'll be reporting back to us on your progress because it is incumbent on us to pay attention to that and make sure we're keeping the city safe. But also the training programmes, I'm assuming they traditionally run September, September as the academic years. And considering where we are now, if we do need to increase capacity and that does mean us growing our own, we will need to be taken a position very soon for the next academic year to make sure that we are supporting you in bringing forward new recruitments for those succession plannings and capacity building. So will you be coming to us at an early enough position so that we can lobby to support you in the resources that you need to deliver the safety for the city? When would you predict coming to us with those, with that information?
Yeah, there are some courses that are on a bit more of a enroling programme. But you're right, some of the more higher-level courses are probably around September. So we're currently looking at a range of courses that might be available. We are having some discussions with legal at the minute just about the governance of some income that we're going to be getting in. So we have had some proceeds of crime money come in. Many of you'll know that other parts of the service, well, in fact, it's trading standards, do a tremendous amount of work against sort of scams and rogue trading. And we will pursue those people through the courts and we do, many get sent to prison and sometimes they have to pay, you know, some of their financial, some of their criminal gains back. So we've got a question with legal at the minute about that. But the beauty of that money is it's off the balance sheet. So it does allow investment potentially in an apprentice. Because the problem with the apprentice, the problem that we've had, for example, compared to, say, private sector housing, is private sector housing currently have got vacancies and have been going out to the market and they simply, you know, they're struggling to recruit. Whereas for us, it's sometimes been that we've not had the funded vacancies and therefore it's a longer process, if you see what I mean. So there've been some subtle differences, you know, but we are all fishing in the same pond. The problem with all the authorities in the region is that, you know, if we take someone in now, we're probably just pulling them from another council because there weren't enough training posts. So absolutely, we'll, through the briefings, we'll give you an update over the next month, I think, as to where we are with the likely programmes. But I know colleagues here and elsewhere are looking at the different options for training courses. Because frankly, it's not just for the food work, it's also, for example, for things like health and safety where, you know, and event safety and things like that, where we've also done new training pathways. So, but yeah, absolutely, we can come back and provide an update and if we do need further support. But I think the whole organisation is trying to do more, as you've all seen, on apprentices. And if we can get some of these courses to be part of the apprentice levy, it does make it easier and that you're not paying those fees, but you still need to pay the wages of the people. And that sometimes has been the challenge.
Thanks for that, Mark. I mean, it leads very nicely into the point I was going to make. Obviously, we are agreeing extra funding in this paper for, to recruit these expositions and, you know, it's vitally important work, the safety of the people of Sheffield depends on it. So it's certainly something I would support, I support us in doing. But there's an odd echo going on. Yeah, thank you. But as explained in the paper in 4.2.1, page 89, this is funded by savings that are having to be made elsewhere in the portfolio. And I'd just like to ask Richard, if I may, if you have a, if you can elaborate on what that might look like in terms of, you know, the effect on the rest of the portfolio, just so that we're fully conscious of what, you know, what we're agreeing to do.
Yeah, thanks, Chair. For the two EHOs, we are looking at vacancies across the service, so looking across streets and regulations. There's a number of sustained vacancies which were just not recruited for a number of reasons for the last two, three years. So utilising that funding, basically taking it from other services and putting it into our own service so it can recruit to these priority posts, these two posts. Any funding over and above for recruitment, including apprentices, we've got to find from other sources.
Right, okay. Thank you for that. I think, I think that's, that's a clear answer, that we're carrying vacancies. Obviously, this does mean other services are perhaps not being delivered to the extent that we would wish, but I think, I think the case has been made that the food safety work, you know, there is a backlog, we need to, we need to work on it and catch it up and these appointments are needed. So I don't think there are any further comments. Thank you, thank you for your, for your work on this and for the paper. I don't know if it's my, it probably says more about me and my perceptions than actually a change in the city, but it feels like we've gone from 30 years ago, it being slight word of mouth where the dodgy kebabs are, to now it's word of mouth, you know, which places are going to be careful with allergies and which, you know, which places are not. And, you know, we shouldn't have to rely on word of mouth. I think a lot of people do, or impressions.
I think you need to go to Imams on the Wicker, never a dodgy kebab there. My son will tell you how great they are.
Excellent. That's really useful information. I, you know, I hope, I hope they have a certificate to bear that out. Oh, sorry, I'm seeing one final, Christine, go on.
It's on the, the subject of finance, really. We've just had a major event in Hillsborough Park, which must have brought in loads of money. Where does that go? Can't we use that money?
CPL, I imagine, is where Vince from Parks money goes.
Thanks, councillor. Events aren't part of this committee and part of my service anymore now, so they do go to CPL. That funding goes into the general revenue camp and as you know, then it's distributed depending on priority area of need. First and foremost, we've got to look within our committee and
First and foremost, we've got to look within our committee and as a committee structure is to try and wash our faces financially. But you're right, to put that challenge in and that's a conversation we're going to need to have wider around income to the city and I suppose windfall income to the city and where that goes.
Thank you. Well, with that intervention in my carefully constructed closing remarks, I think we've exhausted the debate on this item, so I move the recommendations in the report. I'll take silence as the agreement to the meeting. Is everyone agreed? Thank you. That's agreed. Thank you very much. The next item is item 11 Pest Control and Clearance Charges. If you want to come and introduce yourselves and the report, let me just find the page in the agenda. It is on page 121.
Thank you, Chair. So you've got me again? And, oh, yeah, thank you very much. And if I can ask my colleague to just introduce himself as well?
Hello, I'm Gareth Scott-Jard, Environmental Services Team Leader.
So just in terms of a bit of background on this, in some years, increases in fees have been part of the overall, the council's overall budget book, you know, there was a percentage increase. But under the new committee system, we understand that the delegation for this rests with yourselves. So, but it's an active service, you know, there's significant challenges across the city here and nationally about pests. So obviously, it's really good that we get a chance to have this discussion. In Sheffield, unlike in some cities that have completely run their pest control services into the ground or don't actually even really provide anything, we've taken a different approach to try and maintain the concessions that we offer in that we've developed over a number of years, quite a strong commercial element to it with the idea that the commercial part of the service helps, helps the service to provide its statutory work, you know, going to other people's land and saying, you're not doing any of them out rats and we've, you know, we've got to serve notices. But also to actually generally allow, you know, more concessions than you might get in other councils and things like having a free rat service. There's no doubt you can go to, you know, your local hardware store and buy some rat bait and put it down, but people tend to not do that maybe as well as they might. And you get resistance and things like that. So, and to give a sense of what others think of the service in terms of the commercial bits of it, we do run the contracts at Sheffield Teaching Hospitals and a number of other places. So we've got really good expertise using, you know, cutting edge technology and things like that. The service over recent years has gone into a more and more of our working, we adopted a new IT system. There have been some challenges with that and we're still working through them, but we're nearly there with that. But it does mean that we've been able to go a bit more paperless and that's hopefully reduced some costs. But what we are seeing is, like many businesses, costs have really ramped up, both everything from vehicles to the bait that we use, obviously office of time and things like that. So if we want to keep providing some concessionary services to the level that we do, that we need to keep an eye on what the competition are doing and also to remain competitive to be able to do that. So that's the sort of approach that we're taking here. Just to be clear, it's not just purely pest control. We offer a range of services and Gareth and his colleagues have done, I have to say, an absolutely incredible job cultivating relationships with the NHS and others, such that, for example, when there's pressures on beds in the NHS, our team have a really significant role to play with clearing out people's properties that are not suitable for them to be released from hospital because there are problems. So actually, we are part of that process and there's a whole series of different, very innovative clearance type activities we do, including working with Sheffield Council Housing and others to, you know, to offer really good quality, quality, really good quality services, often in very difficult circumstances, you know. We have a really extreme cleansing service here that is a complete niche specialist service. So I'll pause there. I don't know whether you want me to say anything more about the detail within the report. I mean, it's broadly up to a 10% increase for our work in the service. Gareth, here, if you've got any very particular technical questions on that. But if I pause there unless you want me to take you in a bit more detail through the report.
Thank you. Yes, I'll take comments and questions from members. So Barbara.
Thank you. This is curiosity. I mean, it's the horror story that you see featured on television, somebody hoarding in their garden or their house. Who pays for that clearance? Because the authority is always expected to sort of come riding to the rescue. But it's not the actual owner of the property doesn't necessarily have the funds, maybe a tenant, maybe an owner. So how do you recover costs from that and who pays?
So regarding that, so it depends under what access we're actually gaining. So under notice, we may go on land charge if it's privately owned. There may be social funds that we can access. So sometimes NHS social fund will cover, obviously, if it's under the mental health act and things like that. And then other times it may be a recharge through housing. So the housing will sort of recharge with that tenant in order to pay the funds that may, you know, not be provided in their standard of living. So it could be as little as 10 per week and that's claimed back through that way. So.
Thank you.
I think the thing to say is the lack of money does not mean that the work won't go ahead. Whether it's through legal or informal means, we won't leave someone in sanitary circumstances, you know. We will always find a way, but they are very difficult jobs often. If nothing else, the weight of the material, actually, so.
I was also thinking of the effect on the neighbours. I mean, I've been to some properties or close to them and it's so, soul destroying to see things like that. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any hands. I'll just ask a couple of questions. I mean, obviously, what we're proposing in front of us is for an inflationary increase in fees and at two levels of tariff, one the kind of a full rate and a concession rate. I mean, it does strike me that the cost of a fee treatment for somebody on benefits is still going to be, likely to be prohibitive even at the concessionary rate. I don't know whether you have a sense of whether we're striking, obviously, there's a balance to be struck in what level the concession rates are at. But do you think we're getting that balance right or is there scope for, I don't know how you would reduce that rate without just needing to find money to fill the gap. But what are your feelings on that?
I'll just give a bit of an overview on it and Gareth may have some specifics. But it clearly is, it is a challenge and it's this constant balance between the two. But if you look at, for example, bedbugs, the commercial rate now, if you go out to the market to try and deal with bedbugs, which are an increasing issue, yeah, it's, you know, fairly significant because it's a really involved job. It takes, you know, often two people and things like that. So although our £92, it's still a significant amount, it's much, much cheaper. And, but, you know, without charging for something for those that work, the problem is the amount of time, we would need more cash limit put into the service. And I'm not saying that's, you know, not an option for a committee. But we would need significantly more base cash into the service to be able to do that. We could work out what that cost would be and it would be very easy. You know, you've seen the report at the end with the volumes and things like that. So we could always do that, but it would require further funding.
Well, like Ian just said, obviously, when we look at bedbug treatments and the amount of work and the amount of product that we actually have to use now, what we found was obviously after Covid here, we did find the level of infestation has increased rapidly. So we are not treating minimal infestations now. When we are actually allowed in or we actually get the phone call to treat, we just cannot, you know, the cost could be three, four times as much as it actually has just cost that individual, which is obviously posing issues on the service in relation to meeting other demands across the city.
It probably is worth saying, though, that for a lot of the treatments we're doing, for example, in Page All, and you'll see we've made it clear in here that if we've come across a problem, that the landlord had an opportunity to sort out and they've not done it. If we serve notices, the landlord can't take that concessionary rate. So, you know, they will be charged full rate. So many of the more vulnerable people who are in probably private rented properties, to an extent, have a degree of protection in that they would, in many cases, not be paying that, that we would be serving notices on the landlord.
Yeah, thanks for that. And I guess hand in hand with that, as council tenants will have access to this service, I guess, the cost of the housing, the housing revenue account, I guess. Is that, is that correct?
Yeah, so, yeah, so housing normally, you would obviously, like I said, obviously do recharge or they'll pay for treatments where it affects more than maybe potentially one or two tenants. So in flat complexes, they will take an initiative to treat the entirety of the block.
Okay, thank you. I've seen Mark and Mike. I was just going to finish my theme, if I may. Just going back to the point about the concessionary charges. I mean, do you have a sense that there are people effectively turned away, the people with pest control problems that they need help with, but they just can't afford the services? Do you have any sense of the numbers of that?
We have just spoke to the call centre when calls are dropped. So if there's, to see if we can put a report together to find out whether people are ringing for the council service, hearing the amount and then being, you know, put the phone down because, you know, we do understand, obviously, we're in the climate at the moment. And even if they aren't in receipt of the current benefits that allow the subsidised rates, we would endure that those people contact, obviously, the local councillors or bring that information to ourselves to support those on an individual basis. And there has been times where we have seen that we have had to approach heads of services where we may have to, you know, intervene in that in some sense, either contacting landlords or just, you know, finding other routes.
Thanks for that. Mark?
Thanks, Joe. Following on from Joe's questions there. It's understanding the reality of what you're having to deal with and the realm in which you're in. And I'm struck by the fact that we're in Sheffield, the city that addressed rickets and sort of cured it. Yet Sheffield is now one of the cities where rickets is significantly on the rise. We're now at the forefront of almost a rickets epidemic. And it comes to the fact that all these diseases and all these issues that we thought we'd tackled and we got rid of are back with a vengeance, be it rickets, bedbugs, all those things that we thought we'd got rid of. Even within the report, and I know, I hope I'm not stealing your thunder, Tim, but you mentioned about the cost of picking up dead birds from avian flu and such like. This is, this is an international element, despite security bit, that we're having to deal with. Do you feel that government is taking its responsibility and its liability sufficiently serious enough? Because there's going to be those people who aren't going to be reporting bedbugs due to the shame and stigma of it. I'd not want to say I've got bedbugs. I don't want to hold my hand up for sure because it's not something I'd want to say. So there will be those barriers as well. But do you feel that government is putting sufficient public help focus on these elements that we're having to pick up the pieces for to fund services across localities in a way that can actually have beneficial mitigations towards the NHS and the cost burdens that that has on wider society? Because I do feel that something needs to be done so that the cost isn't passed on to our most desperate and needy citizens and that we can actually be a bit more proactive. Because I know full well from your experiences and what you've relayed back to us that when we do go into a property, the tip of the iceberg that brings us in just takes the veil off and multiple of mitigations and interventions that need to be done. So what on earth is government doing to allow us to strip back to even before Dickensian situations? It's frustrating.
I think it's fair to say that the issues we're facing now have always been there to some extent, you know, environmental, public health. There was always a need for it. It just, some of the issues decreased, as you say, and they are back. But there are so many factors at play here, you know, one of them is climate change. There are projections, government has done projections and we've contributed to some of that about how that might change. And, you know, warmer, last year when we got the near 40 degrees, you know, that was fantastic for allowing cockroaches to spread much more and things like that. So, you know, we seem to, here in Sheffield and other places, be having explosions of cockroaches. And, you know, we've got good contacts in other core cities, they're saying exactly the same. So there's a climate change element to some of it. There's also an element of things like more takeaway food and things like that, you know, there'll be food thrown around more. There's things like the water companies and the amount they put in, they used to bait all the sewers, now they don't bait it as much. You know, you'll know from discussions in certain areas of the city that we're pushing Yorkshire Water on elements of that. So I think there's lots of different factors, but certainly, you know, poverty will be a big factor if people are really struggling, that they won't, that they maybe won't deal with this. But also changing populations and things in terms of reporting. You know, we've done research, I think we've talked about it in the past, that a big push for us as a service is about environmental equality across the city. And we know that there are some parts of the city where people will ring up about the first, you know, quite small issue that they see in the neighbourhood, which, you know, they're entitled to do and they will be very proactive and we might get a number of calls. We've got other parts of the city where there might be some quite serious issues and residents might not call us. And, you know, there may be many reasons for that. So I think it's, and hopefully you'll see in the work programme and our approach over the years, some of the things we're doing about neighbourhood improvement are about us being as proactive as we can to spot some of these problems as early as possible. But I think we also talk about in the report that we do want to bring some further work back to you this year about the issue of whether we can put the owners more on landowners. And I think it's the balance between providing concessions, but actually where we've seen such a rise in the private rented sector, that there are still lots of tenants who come to us direct. And the point comes where I think we now need to have another look at that and say, actually, is that right? Because that's someone else's land and actually, could we just take a more, a much stronger approach on that and say, actually, no, if you're the landowner, we will serve notices on you. But what it does require is a huge increase in enforcement. And I think when we've looked at it before, it would have sunk the service, certainly in some areas of the city. But I think we've now, with the investment you gave us last year, we've been able to test out new models of enforcement and serving many notices. So we are now serving hundreds of pest control notices across the city. And I think there's an opportunity later this year to discuss with you, taking that to the next level, having, you know, baseline these increases for now to ensure the stability in the future of the surveys. But I think some interesting policy decisions to come.
Thank you. I look forward to that. Coming back to us. I've got Mike. After that, I'd not see any more hands. I would love to say, but Tim, sorry. Sorry to interrupt, Tim. I would like to move towards the decision. There's a couple of points to clarify on that, but go on, Mike.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Ian, for this report. Clearly, you've had your work cut out this month in getting two quite detailed reports to us. In my ward, I mean, the two main issues that come up are either to do with rats or to do with squirrels. And on the latter.
Rats with fluffy tails.
Rats with fluffy tails, yes. But squirrels seem to have taken a liking to a certain kind of council flat and have managed to get into the roof spaces there. Is it the, is it the council that picks up the tab for that? I say that because I do know of one elderly couple that did phone in to Environmental Services about the problem. And I believe they were wrongly advised that they would have to pick up the bill for it when in fact the rats were working along the whole, the length of the roof spaces of the flats.
So in the case of rats, obviously, what we sometimes find, is it the Saudi area that you?
It is, but on the rats yesterday, coming away from the North East Lac, my wife was waiting for me in the car park, where she, on Hucklow Road, where she, next to the, next to Firth Park. And she, there were four of them scuttling about between the car park and the park itself.
So with regards to complaints of rats, obviously, what we normally find is where rats can move through terrace properties and joint properties, flat complexes. And that's one point that housing tend to be working closely with us, is that rats need an entry point as well as squirrels, which is out of a tenant's remit, the tenant is in that property. If a squirrel is entering via an overgrown tree, it is not, the tenant cannot do anything. We don't advise that tenants cut down trees. It is a housing issue and that is where we report back to housing, meet the local patch officer and put a works plan together for tree maintenance. plan together for tree maintenance. And it's the same with rats, the vent via sewers open. So again, it tends to be a building fault that needs to be relayed back to the R and M teams to resolve. Otherwise, that tenant will be continuously infested with vermin, potentially, which, if there is a paying customer, that is why our operatives are trained to obviously identify these issues, contact local authorities like Yorkshire Water, request surveys. And that is the advice that is given in the fees, where hopefully that tenant may never need to ring the council again, or that homeowner, because the issue is actually resolved.
Thanks. I'm going to have Tim. Let's draw a line under questions and comments about the service after that, and move to the paper in front of us. Tim?
It was just to do with the collection of dead birds. How does that interact with our obligations and with DEFRA and avian influenza particularly? Is that stopping people from reporting them? Because I can't believe there are that many people saying, "Come and pick up the dead bird in my garden." I mean, I would be surprised. I can understand other things. But I don't know how that affects our reporting with DEFRA and making sure that we monitor this sort of potential epidemics.
It's covering a few issues. So it ranges from if somebody finds a dead fox, or through to, obviously, we've got big issues nationally and internationally with avian flu at the minute. So there is a DEFRA scheme where they may pick up birds. But then also, sometimes, if they're not going to pick them up, we would need to pick them. There's a range of activities that we might want to do. They will pick them up generally if they're going to test them. If they think they've got enough testing done in that area, they may not pick them up. But obviously, we don't want members of the public picking them up. And we certainly don't want members of the public picking up, you know, poorly birds that they then take home when they're, you know, wildfowl, because there is a very significant risk that it would have avian flu. So, but yeah, that's why we've had to, you know, we've specifically mentioned it there. But the team will almost, you know, if there is something appears in the garden, you know, it could be a dead dog, cat, fox, things like that. What we don't want is them just always just tipping it back onto the street or dumping it somewhere else. So that's why we often have, you know, calls on that.
Thank you. I mean, we could discuss the service, you know, all day, I'm sure. But I'm conscious that it's now quarter past twelve, we're likely to have to extend to deal with the last item. On the proposed increases, as I see from the papers, it's largely an inflationary increase, except for one or two items. And, you know, I'm just slightly unclear on some of the details of this. So it does say at top of appendix one, this is from the first of April twenty-three. Well, obviously, this is now after the first of April twenty-three. So, but I'm guessing the inflation calculation, the inflation from the first of April twenty-two to the first of April twenty-three, and that's what we're agreeing to, is inflation over that year that we're agreeing to add?
Yeah, so this will be for the fees for this year, this financial year.
Okay. And I'd just like an explanation of why, I mean, why it is that an inflationary increase is necessary to come to this committee, but previously, it was a delegated matter? I don't know if Robert, you want to explain that?
Well, so the power that the committee, so the council relies on, is essentially, it's an annualised power that looks at, or refers to the costs of the provision not exceeding, or the charges for a particular service not exceeding the costs each year. So my assumption is that by bringing it back to the committee, there's a more accurate sense of what that cost would be for this year. As to why we were not relying on the earlier provision, I'm not entirely clear. I can only assume that it's in order to put the committee in a clear position of what this year looks like against the costs base.
Right, okay. Thank you for that. Well, we have a paper in front of us, so I think we're happy to decide on it. But I think we'd like to have a look at what sorts of fees need to come back to us for inflationary increases, rather than, you know, like you say, more accurate reflections of the cost base in future. But, yeah, I don't know if that could be added to the work programme, if it's not there already. Are there any comments? I mean, I would say my view is that an inflationary increase in these costs, bearing in mind the comments I made about the cost of the concessionary offer, seems a reasonable step to take. I don't know if there are any comments on that or questions now. So can I propose we agree the recommendations in front of us on this? I'll take silence at the end of the meeting. Okay, thank you. That's agreed. Thank you. The last item on the agenda is the service charges for Crystal Peak's markets. I suspect we will have to extend the meeting to give this some time. But would you like to introduce yourselves and the report? And I will extend it another ten minutes, if I remember.
Afternoon. I'm Liam Pond, interim operations manager for City Centre Maintenance in Sheffield Markets.
And I'm Ben Brailsford, head of Street Scene Services.
So this paper sets out proposals to review the service charges recharged to the traders at Crystal Peak's market. The council are also a tenant of Crystal Peak's Mall, under a lease made between Albany Courtyard Investments Limited and the council, which commenced on the twenty-ninth of July two thousand and five. For the purposes of this report, that's referred to as the superior lease. The superior lease provides that the council's landlord can recover a service charge from the council for certain services that the provision of is managed by the landlord's agent, which is workmen. Although the underlease is made by the council with market traders allows for this service charge to be covered by the council from the market traders, there has not been an increase passed on to traders in several years. There has also been increases to the service charge paid by Sheffield Council to workmen that has never been passed on to traders within the marketplace. This report, therefore, sets out the impact of under-recovery and proposes options in relation to service charges going forward. As far as the recommendations go, we were hoping that the committee would approve an increase to the service charge currently charged to market traders to close the gap to eventual full cost recovery, agree a period of twelve weeks from the decision being taken to the implementation of the new service charge, and agree that a review should take place after six months from when the increase takes effect to assess the impact of the changes and for officers to make proposals to the committee for moving towards full cost recovery, or if necessary, proposals be brought to reduce the service charge. A bit of the background is that market traders pay three separate charges in Crystal Peak Markets. There is the rent for the actual market stall, a utility charge, and a service charge that is designed to recover the costs of providing the general services of the markets used by all, which includes such items as market staffing costs, cleansing, maintenance, et cetera. Due to the pandemic, the service charge has not been reviewed, and we are significantly under-recovering. The service charge is devised from the costs incurred by the landlords running and maintaining shared parts of the building or estate, which legally the landlord can charge back to the tenants. This report only deals with the costs for the service charge. However, the intention is to bring a future report regarding the rent situation, the rent position, sorry, and review the impact of the recent committee decision to increase the utility charges by fifty per cent. As part of various support measures agreed by them, which was the cabinet system, to help market traders through challenging economic times such as the COVID nineteen pandemic, the service charge hasn't increased since two thousand and nine, where it only saw a three per cent increase. This has led to an undercharge in the recovery for all tenant services attributable to the service charge over this period. Additionally, the service charge payable by all tenants rests on the principle that all traders contribute to one-third of the utility charges for common areas, such as the public space outside their immediate stall area. This has also not seen an increase in recent years. The purpose of this report is to outline the financial implications that the under-recovery of the service charge from council tenants has created, providing some options on addressing this unsustainable situation. The options set out in the report consider the impacts that increasing cost recovery could have on market traders who are already feeling the impact of other price rises in goods and services due to the energy crisis and the cost of living crisis, without impacting their overall business sustainability. If you were to look at the table in one point three point one, the above table shows the operational costs for the market via the service charge in financial year two thousand and twenty-one, twenty-two. Using the figures from one point three two on service charge per square metre generates the overall table below in one point four point one, that shows what we're actually charging back to tenants and where we're under-recovering. This leads to a total amount under-recovered of one hundred and ninety-six thousand and four hundred and fifty-four. The recovery rate for this financial year was approximately only sixty-nine point eight per cent of the actual costs. Cost recovered will never be a hundred per cent of the operational costs for the market, as there are some elements of the market's running costs that are not directly attributable to individual traders, either through the service charge, rent, or direct utilities costs. These non-recoverable costs are budgeted for separately. However, notwithstanding this, the above table demonstrates how low recovery now is. As part of mitigations, a number of structural and operational changes over recent years has meant that the market's team is running as lean as efficiently as possible. It's only through increased tendencies, take-up and reduction in external charges and costs, that the service charge could be reduced. Current occupancy figures at Crystal Peak's market is seventy-nine per cent. Changes to the service charge will not be implemented immediately. There will be a period of twelve weeks between any decisions to change the charge and the charge being implemented. This gives the tenants the reasonable grace period for any increases. There are no proposals to backdate any historic under-recovery of charges. Surely a decision be taken to increase the service charge rate but not fully recover costs, as is recommended. It is proposed that the impact is reviewed at six months with a further performance report to committee on vacancy rates, aged debt, and budget position, with a view to agreeing a plan on increasing service charge cost recovery until reaching full cost recovery. If you were to look at options, one point six point one, if we're looking at a no increase in service charge, obviously, this is leading to this unsustainable position, where we're currently under-recovering one hundred and ninety-seven thousand. Operational costs of the market is continuing to increase for the council, which in turn is not passed on to the traders. One point six point two indicates fifty per cent increase between the deficit between what is currently charged to the traders and what the actual costs are. So that would see an improvement to the budget position by approximately ninety-eight thousand. It will still leave an overall deficit of ninety-eight thousand being under-recovered. With that, there is a minor financial impact on tenants when in comparison to full cost recovery, and a slight increase in the risk of some traders leaving the market due to the financial position. The final recommendation is a proposal in one point six point two, which would be full cost recovery, which is a more sustainable position for the market's budget, but obviously increases the risk of tenants leaving. And it would impact our overall budgetary position on reduced rental income and service charge income. The council's delivery plan sets out that the council needs to ensure its financial stability and sustainability, reducing the large subsidy currently being provided on service charges helps support that outcome. Post-pandemic, the markets are returning to being thriving and vibrant places to shop, eat, and socialise, maintaining markets that offer a wide variety of quality goods and services at reasonable prices, contributes towards our strategic goals of tackling inequalities and supporting people through the cost of living crisis. By keeping vacancy rates low in the market, we're supporting small local businesses to contribute towards our ambition for clean economic growth, and continue supporting footfall not only in the markets but also in the city centre. As part of the consultation, market management have consulted with the traders individually on the shop floor. We've also had recent traders' meetings where we've met face to face. And for any that have slipped through the net on face-to-face consultation, we've also sent out a YouGov email to make them aware that this report is going to be committed. As far as the quality implications go, this will be the first increase in service charge in fourteen years. Therefore, the impact will be more significant. The recommended increase of fifty per cent between the current charge and the actual cost would still see a competitive service charge when compared to other retail outlets. And there will still be an ongoing loss to the council from under-recovery. Current discussions with traders have highlighted some of them do feel that they will struggle with the service charge increase. As mitigation says, the council is proposing, A, not immediately pursue full cost recovery, B, give a reasonable period of time before implementing the new service charges, and C, stagger any future increases towards full cost recovery over a number of years. It is highly likely that increases in costs would be passed on to customers in many cases. The desired outcome is to make the market's budget more stable while minimising the risk to traders of becoming unprofitable and to minimise impacts on costs being passed through to customers. Any increase in recovery of service charge will affect the profitability of traders or small business owners. Changes in profitability can put the overall businesses at risk of them continuing. This could impact the business owners and any staff working for them. On the financial and commercial implications, the council continues to face significant financial challenges, and the inflationary pressures, all of which contribute negatively to the council's budget position. Without actions to address these costs and reduce overspend, a unsustainable financial position could be reached. The proposal of a fifty per cent uplift would increase recovery to five hundred and fifty-two thousand, therefore reducing the subsidy to ninety-eight thousand. Through the legal implications, there is no significant legal implications arising between the superior lease and the lease between the council and its tenants. And on the climate implications, there's no significant climate implications arising from this report.
Liam, thank you for doing this. You don't need to read out the bits and words that are not, you know, where there's nothing to say. Thank you.
As far as alternative options are considered, we don't believe that the options to do nothing, it has to be rejected due to the unsustainable nature of increasing subsidy. And also, the option to move straight to full cost recovery would have too much of an impact on the tenants. So therefore, the reasons for recommendation is one point six point two, an increase to the service charge by fifty per cent on the deficit between the current charge and the actual cost.
Thank you, Liam. Can I have the committee's agreement to extend by half an hour in order to consider this item? Take silence. Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Was that the end, Liam? Right. Did you have anything to add, Ben? Or are you happy with that? I mean, there has been a supplementary paper that's come round. I don't know if anybody wants to explain this, because I'm not very clear how useful it is, let me put it that way.
Yeah, let me fill it out, Joe. There was a request to understand what the current occupancy rates and vacancy rates might do in terms of the various options that were proposed and put forward. So the paper basically sets out each option, a no increase, a fifty per cent uplift as proposed by the paper, and full cost recovery for various occupancy rates at the market. So we're currently at about seventy-six per cent occupancy rate, which is, I think, on page two. So that shows that if we go for the recommendation in the paper, then there will still be a challenge for us to kind of reduce that gap between the budget and the service charge that we can mitigate within service. So, you know, any drop with that in occupancy rate makes it more difficult. Any increase in occupancy rate makes it easier.
Yes. I mean, I'm just going to ask some questions on this. I've seen Tim's hand, and I'll take other hands. Yeah, right. Okay, let me just write these names then. Diane, Sean Ed, Christine, and Barbara. And Barbara, and Mike. And Mike, okay. But just to clarify, this paper that's come to us, the supplementary paper, I don't think the numbers you've got calculated there, where it says fifty per cent increase, I think you've calculated a fifty per cent increase, not an increase of half of the deficit. And so the numbers in that middle column, because if you look at the last row of the middle column, the fifty per cent increase is actually higher than the full cost recovery increase, which is only forty-one per cent, because you could recover full costs at, you know, at a lower rate for higher occupancy. So the middle column is not particularly informative. The third column, the numbers are actually the same on every table, because you're saying recover all costs no matter what. So the only informative figure in the third column is the what percentage increase it would take to recover full costs at that level of occupancy. And the first column is not particularly informative, because it's no change. It just says how, you know, how badly we do at different rates of occupancy. But obviously, it doesn't, you know, it's in the case of no change. So I'm not sure any of this, this paper is particularly informative. And then if we look at the row that refers to seventy-six per cent the current occupancy rate, you recover full costs at sixty-nine per cent. But that is not the figure in the body of the paper. If you look at, let me find it. If you look at one point six point three, just take the middle ones, for example, food and cafe, to go from five hundred and forty to increase that by two hundred and forty-five, that's a forty-five point four per cent to increase that by two hundred and forty five, that's a forty five point four percent increase. That's not a sixty nine percent increase. So I don't see why those figures have that discrepancy. So and then obviously the figure in one point six point two is half of that, which is obviously not the figure in the middle column for the reason we already described, in addition to this discrepancy. I don't know if you could explain that.
Yeah, I think the figures, well, I think the figures in this paper are there to help indicate the difference in occupancy levels. So I think actually in that first column, you can see a difference in terms of the impact in terms of the less traders, the less occupancy we've got in, there is a larger overspend. So it starts off at two hundred and forty three thousand. If you get up to eighty five percent, you're only eighty thousand pounds. So there is a use to that. There is discrepancy between the figures in the report and the figures that are being presented here in terms of that service charge. And I think that the issue there is finance have used some current information that's recently become available. It wasn't ready at the time of the preparation of the report into what that service charge could potentially be. So we can certainly go back and review that. But that's why there's a discrepancy between the reports' figures, which was prepared a couple of weeks ago, and this very recent paper that was prepared yesterday. That's my understanding why there's a discrepancy. What it does still do is highlight the impact of the various occupancy levels, which I think is the request that was put forward.
Okay, well, thank you for that. I mean, it does seem a big, forty five to sixty nine percent does seem, both, I mean, both eye watering increases in anything does seem a large discrepancy for a couple of weeks of movement. But okay, I will go to the list of hands that I've got at this point. So find it, who was first? Remind me who was first. Diane. It was Tim. Nice try, Sean Ed. Yes, I've got Tim and then Diane.
Yeah, as I know from a previous place I served as a councillor, a councillor that doesn't look after its markets and tends to lose them. And a mutual friend of mine, Sean Ed, was responsible for that. I'm just totally befuddled by the figures because you're talking about fifty percent occupancy as a potential falling to, but there's no more. What sort of modelling are you done? Because what if it falls below that? You know, we're really struggling if it falls below that with too much of an increase. And as market trades are under pressure, I've just seen also today about some of the stuff that Sheffield Council seems to be doing, which may drive them towards here. But one of the things I can't, I can't understand is how you've modelled this and what, is there any modelling you can do on the potential increases and what the occupancy is going to be, or is it just a, you know, finger in the air exercise that we're doing? Because I can't understand. And with Crystal Peaks, we've got to make sure that we look after it properly and that we have a viable market that has as high occupancy as possible, which will give us the greatest income as possible, is my view.
If you're, Liam, I just picked up, I mean, just in terms of the modelling that's been presented here, that was at request of a member to present that modelling here. So that's why that modelling's been particularly provided. In terms of occupancy, we've got applications awaiting approval at Crystal Peaks Market. So in terms of vibrancy and occupancy levels, they're certainly going in the right direction at the moment. The mitigation here is a proposal to produce an increase in that service charge, which should be, you know, the tenancy rates there, that should be a full cost pass through. So again, what we're suggesting here is better than what the kind of tenancy arrangements are in terms of more subsidy and support from the council. But what we're doing is proposing that we review that after a period of time. So it's an option. If we're seeing that there's greater challenges created by that that are unsustainable, that we don't get to those positions where we're in really kind of low occupancy levels. So, you know, I think that's how we're kind of approaching that, bit by bit. Options for review, options to kind of come back if there are issues that have been created. And obviously monitoring and reporting back on occupancy levels and increasing in edge debt and things like that as well, so we can get those indicators as soon as possible.
Can I just ask about applications? You talk about council applications or applications for tenants to come in? Because I'm confused about that. What are we looking at? And are they aware of the potential increases they may be faced?
Yeah, so that is currently waiting new tenants within the marketplace to take us over the eighty percent threshold. They are all aware of this paper that's been presented to the West and Streets in Committee.
Thanks, Diane.
Thank you, Chair. I've got two questions. One of them is a a question of clarification, I think, really, about you break down the costs paid by the stall holders or the traders into three areas. And you're proposing to increase the service charge aspect of this. But my understanding, and this goes to the heart of my question, my understanding is, the rumour is that they, superior lease with the owners of Crystal Peaks, Sheffield City Council actually negotiated a peppercorn rent and doesn't actually pay any rent itself on that space. But in actual fact, charges the tenants an element of rent for their stalls. So my question would be, is that correct? And where, in that case, where does that go? What happens to that? Are we, you know, does it go somewhere and can it be used to support the service charge element? And the other one is a bit about the process. Because you are anticipating increasing the charges that the tenants pay, that the traders pay, and then reviewing in six months' time how many of them have gone bust or can't pay it. And I know this market is very well valued in the community. It performs a very useful social function. You know, there are meeting spaces there. People can meet their friends and have a cup of tea and a sandwich or walk around shopping together. It's very sustainable because it's served by all manner of public transport. And it is a place, in fact, where you can buy two apples or an onion and two carrots or whatever. So it helps to cut down on food waste. And isn't it a question of shitting the stable door after the horse has bolted in actual fact? Reviewing the effects of what you're doing six months after you've done it, rather than talking through the implications now and seeing what the impact will be?
Yeah, so just on your first point, I believe that we do pay small rents to Crystal Peaks, but the majority of the recharges are via a service charge. So we pay directly the service charge, the same as every other tenant within Crystal Peaks Mall. On the second point, I mean, because it's not been increased for such a long period of time, that gap between full cost recovery and what we're actually recharging to the tenants now is only going to get bigger with inflation and other elements over the course of the next few years. So by tackling it now, by hopefully not putting it up to the point where we're going to put businesses at risk, but at the same time looking at the budget from a council's position to try and improve the overall situation is about a balancing act between the two.
Right, just to, I'll come back to you in a second. In some of the questioning that the members have put about this, there have been emails flying around and there are figures in this email that aren't in any of the documents. I don't know if that means I shouldn't refer to them in public, but there are figures for the rents and service charges on a nine square metre store. And as you say, the service charge figure is higher, but I don't know if I should say any more than that or whether, you know, that's a confidential figure. Yeah, George, the Rent Orange paper.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay, so that's fine.
For that email, we've just pulled information from that paper just to answer those.
Right, okay. So, but it does mean that if we increase their service charge by twenty percent, for example, then effectively we're increasing their total charge of rent and service charge by twelve, thirteen, fourteen percent, if you do the maths. It's, you know, it's still a large increase in the total cost, just putting that service charge. Sorry, Diane, carry on.
No, it was just to check because I didn't quite get the sense of that. So are we making profit on the rent that we charge to the traders in any case outside of this? Because a small rent seems to me to suggest the same as peppercorn, but we are charging traders an element of rent. And we're, you know, if we don't have to pass all that on, it's disingenuous charging it to them if we're also charging the service charges that we have to recover.
In theory, the service charge should be passed on as full cost recovery. The rental income should be the portion of profitability for the markets. If that was the case of that all the costs of running the markets were offset by the service charge, then the rental income would be profitable. But because we're so heavily subsidising on the service charge and the operational cost of the building, we never see a profitability.
So to summarise from my point of view, you are making a profitable rent, but you're using it to subsidise the service charge. So you do make a profit on the rent. Thank you.
Again, the figures in the email, which I don't think, I'm not sure I've been shown in the papers, would say that the profit on the rent is wiped out by the deficit on the service charge and that we're seventy K in arrears. We're looking to recover more than seventy K here. So if in, under the proposal and the recommendation at fifty percent, that would put us back into profit on the market as a whole. Is that fair? Okay. I hope that was a useful clarification. Sean Ed.
Thank you, Chair. I've got a few questions. What is the churn on the market in terms of traders being there? Whether you've got people who've been there for fifty years or people who sort of come and then leave because it isn't quite what they wanted? What are you actually doing to get more traders, I think, is the bigger question. Because the seventy five percent and even going up to eighty percent is quite unambitious in a sense. And I, you know, what are we doing to make it one hundred percent? And are you doing special events? I don't know whether you say, come and have tasters of using the stalls. Let's have more, I don't know, craft markets or let's have pre-loved clothes, that's a good one, markets or things that will actually draw people to come in because you've got a special event and then they'll see the rest of the market and if they're an old lady like me, they will buy their two apples. But also, what are you doing to work with the traders to do this? What's the consultation been? And bearing in mind that Joe said to us that we are now, as a committee, very excited by page thirty six of our agenda about public engagement toolkit. I always follow my leader, Joe. What are we doing about talking to the public about what they want and why they come and why they continue to come? Because, you know, we're saying that we want to work with partners and the partners are both the traders and the public. If this is going to be a more vibrant market than it currently is. And I think it's really important, we keep saying that we want out of town stuff to work in our different centres. So I think it's really important that this market is one that we nurture rather than beat a bit because we don't think it's giving us enough money.
Yeah, so as far as trader turnover, we do have very low losses since Covid on the traders that were there pre-Covid and what are currently left now. The ones that we have lost, for the most part, we've seen other businesses come in that take up a similar business model, such as the value of foods aspects. You know, that's another area that unfortunately we did lose, but we've got a new tenant going in there to provide that. As far as events go, we've just gone through a tendering process to secure our in-house events and promotional activities with a company that we've used for many years and we're seeing some really good responses on that, certainly on, you know, your traditional stuff like Santa's Grotto and Easter activities, summer activities for children. But we're also tying in with Love Your Local Market, which promotes an event where we've had people going around the mall itself, trying to draw more people into the market to see what goods are available to those shoppers that predominantly might miss the market because of its location within Crystal Peaks. It's only got one main entrance point that doesn't serve from a car park, you know, within the main mall infrastructure. We're also looking at putting on promotional events. The thing with Crystal Peaks is because occupancy rates are, even though eighty percent sounds unambitious, it's pretty good in comparison when you look back over the last two, three years on where occupancy rates have gone up and down. But because of the size of Crystal Peaks, it's not the same as the mall where we've got big open areas where we can have quite large events such as record fairs because the facilities don't allow us that. So we're very much limited with the space that we've got, but for the space that we do have, we are really trying to push on the promotional aspects of the market. There's also other areas such as social media where over the last couple of years, we've instigated an officer to do social media that's seen a big upturn in followers and algorithms pertaining to interactions that have brought people into the market. We're also working with Business Sheffield to try and, you know, talk to businesses in surrounding areas that might be struggling due to the cost of a living crisis, you know. Certainly out on the High Street, we know that rental rates and service charge are significantly higher than the rates that we can offer. So we're all looking at, I mean, you've got a balance of trade issue as well because with people coming in, you've got to make sure that you're not going to impact on the businesses that are currently in there. So you don't want to oversubscribe on one business that is detrimental to a trader that's already within the market. So we have got to be selective in that area on what traders do come in, just to make sure that that balance of trade is taken into consideration.
Chair, can I just follow on a couple of things? So I think a couple of things off the back of that that I'd just like to elaborate a little bit on. I'm also quite new to the service. I met with the traders at Crystal Peaks a couple of months ago. What I saw from the representative group of traders that met with me and Liam and the other market staff up there were, they were all singing the praises of the current market management in terms of engaging, wanting to do more, delivering more. So I can clearly see there's a relationship there where we are talking to the traders, we're listening to them and we're delivering on what they need. We always want to do more. We should do more. There is more that we can do. But we are so hampered at the moment by the lack of resource and I think that goes to the heart of kind of why we're here today. Everything has been invested into the market to keep costs running as low as possible, so we're not passing costs on to the traders. We could have much wider, bigger promotional campaigns, but that money's got to come from somewhere. So we're trying to get the balance right here of being able to operate a good quality market and invest in the promotion so we get the footfall there. We drive that kind of occupancy level up, which is good for all traders. It's good for sharing the costs. It's good for everybody. So we're here today to sort of say, you know, yes, we should be kind of doing full cost recovery. We don't think that's the right thing to keep it running for future generations because actually we're at that point where things are really unsustainable. We can't continue to progress like this or we're just, we're going to lose that level of quality. We're going to lose the promotions. We're going to lose the marketing.
And my point about actually talking to customers and consumers, what are we doing about that? My other sort of question, I'm not sure, is why there is only one entrance, why there aren't more? And is that actually a hazard?
It's not an hazard because we do have fire escapes out of the back entrances into the service yard. So there is a full fire risk assessment done on the building. Historically, there did used to be another entrance to Crystal Peaks. I have been in consultation with the mall management on behalf of Crystal Peaks management to see if there are alternatives to reopen that back entrance. There is a bit of resistance to that from the mall management in that some of the other tenants within the building wouldn't like to see a drop in footfall where they've got the main entrance coming from the car parks. So we've had to put together some CAD designs and we've got, well, obviously there's a cost. So we've had to put together some CAD designs and we've got, well, obviously there's a cost to reopening that, that back entrance. So we've got to put that, uh, to capital to see if that is possible for us to do. At the same time, we've had to present this to, uh, their management team to say, this is what we're proposing to do. This is where we like the entrance to be. Is this acceptable? And we've not had a, a full answer on that as yet. But from what I gather from, uh, our colleagues in Business Sheffield, they have had an indication that there is some resistance to us reopening that historic, um, entrance at the back.
If, if I could just come in on the, on the second entrance question, I, it, it is something a number of traders said to me, uh, when I spoke to them. Um, it does strike me that the idea that, um, the way to treat customers going to a shopping centre is to make them walk past some things on the way to the thing they want to go and see might have worked before Amazon and online shopping and all that. But today you've got to let people get to the thing they want to see. And, you know, if they wander further into the building, that's a bonus. But the idea that we can corral customers like that, I just, I just think it's, 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 it's a, it's a kind of thinking about retail that we've no longer, no longer merited. We've got to give people what they want. And if they want to come, turn up and go straight into the market, we've got to let them do it. Um, and yeah, sure, everybody would like other people's customers to walk past their shop first, but it's not possible to deliver that to everybody. So just to emphasise that point, sorry to interrupt, do carry on. Um, had you finished, Sean?
Sorry, a- about, um, talking with consumers and customers, which I know Ben was dying to tell me.
I, I, I think it's something absolutely that we should be doing more of. I think we've, we've done some stuff historically, you know, we've, we've, we've had kind of Covid getting in the way. We need to be talking to, to customers more about what we want, they want to see. We, we do that with the traders and I think we should be doing more of that with the customers. We've now got good social media links. We, you know, it's, it's, it's easier to, to make some communications. And I think we've, we've, we've already talked about in this year's service plan, doing something both at the mall market and also at Crystal Peaks as well in terms of just getting a bit of a sense of where people think we are, what they prefer to see. So we've got some evidence base to kind of sort of say, this is where we're going to invest our time and effort in marketing, promotion and, and developing things. Traders though, I think have got a very good sense of, of, of what's important to them. You know, it's their individual customers, they talk to them. So I think we can rely on some of the feedback that we get from the traders when they say, actually, we want you to do, um, an activity for the King's Coronation because we know that'll be of interest and drive people in. Or we want to do stuff around Easter with, with kind of kids and families because that's where our target market is. So, you know, I, I think we, we do take that now, but we should, certainly should do more. And we've got a plan to, to take that forward this year.
Okay, I'd, I'd like to move us on because we've got four more hands and we're, we're close to needing to extend again. And we've, we're, we're still in the kind of question phase and we're not discussing the merits of the proposal quite yet. Um, so, uh, Christine.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I think Sinead covered a lot of my points, so hopefully it won't be too long. Um, just one of my big questions is why have we let it get so bad? Surely there was a deficit last year and why is it just being left to drift on? And you can answer that in a minute. Um, yeah, and again about footfall. Um, I mean, you said you spoke face to face to the traders. Presumably they gave you an indication of how well the market's doing. Is there any measures of footfall pre-Covid now? Is it, is it doing better? Is it doing worse? We, we don't seem to have an understanding of what this space is doing at the moment. So, um, that was my impression. And, um, the service charge is the, is the amount of money we pay to the landlord, I think. So we have to get it from the tenants to give it to the landlord, to do all the maintenance and all the other things that are in the list. Is there any way of working with the landlord to reduce that or to get a better deal with that? I mean, just those kind of, and also finally, have you thought of pop-up shops? Because they used to be popular. There you go. That's, that's mine in a nutshell.
So just, just on footfall, so we, we brought reports to committee, um, back in March regarding footfall at Crystal Peaks. Looking at it, it's almost going back to pre-Covid levels. It's still not quite there yet. But that's not just, uh, an issue with the market, that's the centre as a whole. There, there are other elements, external elements that are having issues with getting to Crystal Peaks, for instance. So a lot of the public transport links have been cut from surrounding areas, which I'm hearing is a major issue for some of the historic customers to, to both the market and the mall, uh, are struggling to get out there. Um, where?
Do you want to pick a bit up about?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. And again, in terms of why we're reviewing this now, um, you know, Co- Covid had such a, a, a long and lasting impact that, that really, we've just seen and as, as Liam's report that he brought to, to committee a few months ago, it shows we're just starting to go in that right direction with footfall. Um, I think the, the reality was there was a couple of decisions around how we treat rent and service charges during that Covid period. Um, those decisions are, are now lapsed and we're getting back to the point where we need to make a decision today that would, would mean that, you know, kind of if we, we should be at full service charge now. Um, and, and that's why we brought the paper today because we, we don't think we're quite ready to make that, that step there. So it wasn't Covid in two thousand and nine. There's also been lots of discussions, um, sort of backwards and forwards over the years about sort of traders, where things are and getting those balanced right. Uh, but that's, that's what we're trying to do is now we're trying to get into that right step. As Liam sort of says, get into a sustainable service where we've then got the options around the rent and the support and the subsidy that we provide through that kind of rental option. Um, and, and the, you know, it's, it's much clearer for traders what they need to kind of, um, plan for and budget for in terms of, in terms of where we are with that. So I think obviously while ever, you know, we're, we're in this kind of uncertainty, not very decision, it's, it's not great for them. Um, I think just on the service charge element, I think it, it, just, just from a, a, a point of clarity, you might want to kind of finish off on this, this Liam. The service charge back to the, the traders we're talking about today isn't just the service charge that we, uh, have to pay to Crystal Peaks. It's, it's, it's all the elements of, of, of what makes up kind of communal areas in the marketplace in, in Crystal Peaks. So it includes, um, some of the, the, the management, the staffing, includes security, includes cleaning, all that type of stuff. So, so some of that is provided through other, um, services and contracts that, that we've got, not just, um, the, the, the.
Yeah. If I could, if I could interrupt on that point and to, in one point, three point one in the report, it's broken down. So about a quarter of it is the, is the service charge that's passed through. Um, there's a hundred thousand on, for, for management, which I guess is, is, is that staffing? Does that, does that include, um, you know, going up to the change to people like yourselves or is it just people on site?
So the, the way, where it's on finance is that the element of.
Just before you answer, can we, can we agree a further extension of another half an hour? You're going to have to go, right. Uh, yeah, I, I, do you object to the extension? I mean, well, I mean, I don't think, I don't think we can resolve, resolve it in the next thirty seconds. So, um, okay, well, I, I'll take, I'll take that as an agreement to the, uh, approval of the extension. So apologies for, apologies for running over the time we have available. Um, right, so, um, yeah, so, so, um, yeah, Liam, and again, can we please be brief in our answers and questions from now on?
So, yeah, the, the staffing elements are taken from the service charge recharge back into a central pot. So we have a separate budget markets HQ, which covers the staffing costs for the entire market service. But that is an element that's taken.
Okay, I, I thought, I was hoping for a simple answer to that. Never mind. Sorry, I was interrupting an answer to a question from, um, from Christine who's now going. Okay, so, so, sorry, carry on. I mean, yeah, so, but yeah, the one point three one has, has that breakdown. And there are questions, I think, to be asked on all of those elements really. Anyway, carry on.
I, I think just finishing that, that bit off was, was, you know, could we just work with the landlord, just reduce the service charge? Um, that, and the answer is no, easy. We've, we've got some of those charges in our control. And when we said, you know, we've kind of bit back to the bone, reduced everything that we can, that's the, that's where we are with, with those elements that make up. So management doesn't just mean people like myself and Liam, it's, it's the management of the market and the, the elements that are going to managing the, the, the market up there that's, that's made up. Um, yeah.
Thanks. Okay, can we go to Barbara?
Thank you, Chair. Um, luckily, most of my questions have been answered in the course of discussions, but there is a couple outstanding. First of all, following on from Christine, I've written, I'd like to see evidence of, uh, what the trade, that, what the traders are on board with. We've got your hearsay, you know, you say so, but I'd like to sort of see more to, uh, to support that. Now you've got figures on page one hundred and forty-one and one hundred and forty-two, forty-three. You've got at the top, the table stall type with square meterage. Um, is this the total meet, square metres allowed for each kind of type? Is it fixed in place? And I'll, I'll give you the second bit because on the next page, you've got examples of the financial impact. You've got the number of, a number of non-food traders, eighteen, food twenty, twenty cafe, twenty-seven, meat and fish, eighteen. So I just want to know how, uh, the explanation for that.
So that key that you can see there, the total square footage is what's currently allocated to each trader type. So for instance, the cafe square meterage there on seventy-three square metres is allocated amongst three units that is predominantly just cafes. So for, for each trader type, so they're in four separate types, food, non-food, each section of the market is separated into allocated, uh, trader types. So like I say, at the moment, we've got three cafe areas. So that's what causes this.
I think that's answered the question, hasn't it, Barbara? Do you have to ask a part two? Mike, please.
Sorry, there's only the potential to have three cafe types. One trader moves out, another one can move in. So what you're saying is this meterage is actually fixed for the different kinds of provision?
To a degree, uh, certainly for cafes because they have, uh, utilities and cooking equipment and extraction systems. Generally where you've got food and non-food, depending on what the food element is. So if it were just pre-packaged, uh, that requires just a fridge, then in theory you can put food in and non-food. This square meterage in that respect can change depending on what we've had over the course of the year. So our colleagues in finance will generate these figures based on what trader we've had in each unit.
No, it worried me because I was thinking if you're trying to improve sort of the uptake, the occupancy rate, that's very, very limiting. And you're saying it isn't apart from, say, the cafes. Right.
I, I mean, I'm conscious of the, the, the popularity of cafes in the mall market and, and how few cafes there are at Crystal Peaks. Is that something that is, that is an option to, to say, let's have more of a food court, I think?
Uh, we are trying. Uh, we've got two very successful cafes that have been in there for a number of years. Uh, it's the third cafe that's proving difficult to, to lease at this moment in time.
Thanks. Um, have you finished, Barbara? Thanks. Mike.
Thank you, Chair. Um, just one question now. On page one four three, um, it's item one point six two. Um, the, um, where, where you say for the expected ninety-eight thousand, um, shortfall that would result from the, if we go with this recommendation, is that based on occupancy remaining the same or does it assume that some traders would withdraw?
Uh, my report that I've done from the figures from the start is on hundred percent occupancy. So that's if we were at full capacity, these figures are generated at.
Thank you.
Thank you. I almost accidentally dropped that there. Um, right, I've, I've scratched my head about that slightly, but Mark, do you want to ask your question and I'll, I'll.
Yeah, uh, I might articulate some of your concerns there. O- o- on, on the supplementary paper you gave, as you said, that if you increased occupancy to eighty-five percent and increased the fees to fifty percent, there would be a surplus of nineteen thousand, I think. Because there was a negative figure on there. So, so that doesn't quite chime with what you just said. But let that be, I'll, I'll, I'll let Joe come to that. He may be able to clarify that for me. Um, you said about the operators of Crystal Peaks, um, not being prepared to put in another door. Now, I'm sure, I'm sure, I'm sure you guys can, can get the sense. I, I know our green councillors have left and I, I'm sure that's because they don't see this as, no. Uh, it's not because they don't see this seriously as we do. I, I don't want to play politics on this bit here. We're all deeply concerned about any increases in fees, uh, damaging the market, its sustainability going forward. And we know that you're trying to get to a position where it functions. So we're not wanting to be antagonistic here. But you said something about the managers of Crystal Peaks, which, which really does concern me. They won't open a door because it may adversely affect their other traders. This, this, this sets several things going in my head. The, one, the operators of Crystal Peaks don't see the market as, as important. Or maybe they want the market gone. Or maybe they just don't care about it because at the moment it's out on a limb, it's got one entrance. We could increase the footfall. We do need to increase the footfall. Um, i- if we had an occupancy rate of, of, um, ninety-five percent, we probably wouldn't need to put up the cost at all because it might even be sustainable from that table. There, there are many elements here that the, this report is, is, is attempting to, to do the best it can do. But we're in perfect data and we're in a perfect environment. Um, what exactly have the operators of Crystal Peaks offered to support these marginal, these smaller traders? Because let's face it, i- if you look at places like Boots, Sainsbury's, whoever, they all started as a single shopper, as a single market and they went on to be national, national providers. Um, it almost feels like the management company are belligerently blocking the small traders and, and, and forcing us into taking a position that we, the council, then take the repercussions of trying to be fiscally responsible because the market operate, the, the, the Crystal Peaks operators just ain't, ain't playing ball. I'm, I'm really concerned about this. The, the, it, it came out in the question earlier as to, as to why there's only one entrance. So I don't know. Um, it's unfair to put you in the position of trying to speculate for somebody else. But those guys need to come here and answer to us and answer to the stall holders as to just what the hell they're playing at. Because I, I'm, I'm really dissatisfied with, with, with some of this element here for sure.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think, Mark, you're, you're right. We can't speculate on, on what's, what's behind that. I, I know Liam, you've got a good relationship, um, with the landlords up there. And I think what we need to do is take the messages that we're hearing today and, and, and work with the landlords to make sure that you've got the answers that, that, that you need to, to convince you that they, um, are as interested in the, the market as they are all the, all their other tenants, which I'm sure they are enough. All footfalls good for Crystal Peaks. Uh, you know, they want, they want people in there. Um, you know, but, but obviously we'll, we'll work with them and with you to, to, to make sure that people are given the confidence that they are doing their utmost to support the market in the same ways I'm sure they are there, the other tenants that are up at Crystal Peaks.
Thanks. I think we, um, Richard.
Thanks, Chair. Sorry. Thank you, Chair. Uh, just going back on, on councillor Jones's point, um, there is a, on the forward plan, a review of markets, which would be more suitable for this kind of conversation where we can do some pre-work on, on the leases and why the decision was originally took to have one exit and why not. And that's coming in, in, in September or November. I've not been able to check the, the forward plan. But that's exactly the kind of conversation we'd like to bring at that, at that session.
Thank you, Richard. Yes, it is in the agenda. And, um, yeah, I was considering mentioning that. There, there, there is a piece of work to be done on, on vibrance in markets. I think we would, we would all welcome as members. I think I'd like to move towards, um, proposals and decisions. I don't know if anybody from the floor wants to make a proposal or if not, I, I would be happy to. Um, so, I mean, I, I must say that, well, no, let me put a question first. What, what would be, in your view, a healthy occupancy rate for the Crystal Peaks market?
I don't know if you can remember, Chair, but if you remember my report that I broke back in March, the occupancy rate of our market is above what's currently, you know, a national, uh, occupancy rate throughout a majority of, of markets around Britain. Um, obviously the more, we'd love to see completely full. Um, but we've got to also be, we've got to mi- sort of mitigate our, our own expectations that that's perhaps never going to be the case, that we'll, that we will eventually make a hundred percent occupancy. Just because there is a turnover of traders. Uh, not so much in Crystal Peaks, uh, lately, you know, we've, we've managed, like I said before, we, we've held on to a lot of our historic tendencies. Um, but around, around where we currently are now, seventy-six to eighty, eighty-five, eighty-six percent is, you know, going in the right direction at least.
I mean, thank you. I mean, there, there's a parallel, isn't there, with the rate of unemployment? And a communist will say if it's below, I forget the number, it's two percent or four percent or something. They say, well, that, that's just people between jobs and they're going to get another job. And above that, it's something to worry about. People are out of work and can't, can't find work. It does seem to me that a vacancy rate of twenty-four percent is what we're talking about is like an unemployment rate at the high end, not an unemployment rate at this is normal turnover. Um, so, uh, I'm struck that the figures we have in front of us, um, don't, don't, don't seem to give us the information we need. They don't seem to be consistent with each other and I think it's been pointed out in a number of respects and the, the latest, um, question from Mark, uh, was another one. Um, it makes it for a very difficult basis to, to make a decision. We are all concerned that the markets need to be viable. Um, that to me, a, the, the one figure I can point to, which is a solid figure, is the occupancy rate, which at seventy-six percent suggests that, yeah, it's not failing, but it's not really succeeding either. It's, it's on the, it's on the cusp. It's on the edge and it could go in one of two directions. And in that context, I'm extremely nervous about putting these up. Now, we've learned, again, through our other investigations, that yes, we, we are making a loss on the markets, but the council enjoys a peppercorn rent which it does not pass on to the traders. And so the financial position is a little bit more complicated than, than, than the, the figures in front of us. And while, yes, we're still making a loss, if we agree the recommendation in front of us, that would turn that into a profit to the council on the markets. And to do that and still risk, um, a failure in the market, so a downward spiral, I think would be irresponsible. So I, I, my view is that we should not be agreeing this proposal today. I do recognize that we do want to move forward, towards, towards recovery. Um, and I think that there needs to be a, um, a limit on the hit in any one year. Um, related to, I suppose, related to the rate of inflation is how I would do it. And, and not to go above that towards actually making progress in recovery unless the occupancy rate reaches a certain level, which is, which is healthy, which I, to my mind would be eighty-five to ninety percent. Uh, sorry, Diane, I mean, I'm, I'm expending on a proposal, but, but do, do comment.
I, I just wanted to remark, Chair, um, it's not just the occupancy, but also the footfall, isn't it? Because if people go in, if they're attracted to the market, uh, so that brings in Chinese stuff. What do people want? Will they go in? Um, if they go in, they're gonna likely spend. So the, the, the footfall is another easy, easy, easy measure. And I don't think we know enough, I, I agree with you. I don't think we know enough about this very complex situation to make a, a decision. I, I
Yeah, no, I, I take the point, I take the point. The reason I'm focusing on occupancy is because that is a figure that is, that is clear and it has a clear implication. And the footfall figure is also important for, for, uh, for, you know, all the reasons you give. But I wouldn't know if you told me that I'm, you're getting X thousand people through the door a week, I wouldn't know whether that was a high figure or a low, low figure, whereas I could look at the occupancy figure and say, that's, that, that's not high enough. Um, so I, what I'm minded to do is to, um, not to agree the recommendations in front of us, um, to ask for a, a, a plan for improvement of the markets in line with the, the paper we're having, we, we due to have later in the year. And for proposals that, that, you know, that proposals coming forward for cost recovery in future that don't give such big hits in one go. And so would allow, would, and, and would recognize the occupancy as a, as a uh, 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 as one of the tests that, that, you know, you can go be more ambitious with recovery if you have a high occupancy rate and you can't be at a lower rate. That would be my view. Um, Robert?
Just super quickly, so we know from the paper and, and from finance colleagues that the do nothing option um, has such an impact on the budget, um, that, that it's beyond the budget framework. But I, I, as I understand the proposal there, the committee, based on the proposal, you're suggesting that there's not enough information to make a decision today and it comes back. Clearly the implication of that is that it may be that, that the figure that you're presented with has to make up for the shortfall between now and such date that you then consider it. So it's just to note that, that we're not, this is not a proposal to do nothing permanently, but the implication is that it may come back with worked numbers that mean that we've got to make up for a shortfall.
I, I, I fully get what you're saying in terms of the advice you're giving there, I, I fully understand it. But I, I, I'm fully behind Joe at this moment. We are really, really struggling. It, it's not because of lack of will or, or, um, the ability to want to make tough decisions. It's just that we don't feel this is necessarily the right decision. For, for instance, what we're looking at here is we're looking to do, uh, a, a significant intervention at this stage to, to bring back some of the fiscal deficit and then look at a, an additional thing. If we were to, um, put in place a significant step that, that dropped occupancy rates to fifty percent, we would be back to where we started and then we'd be into a death spiral of driving the market into decline. However, if there was a, an additional paper that said instead of recovering over a six month to twelve month period, we had a five-year forward plan where over the back end of that, we would then generate a surplus to cover off any deficit now. I know it makes it difficult for the council to carry debt forward, but we could have a longer profile in terms of that recovery instead of a six to twelve month period that I think that we could feel more assured at as, as we go forward. Traders all feel that they have something to work towards that they can achieve instead of just putting up the prices tomorrow or in twelve weeks to, to, to cover off their, their, their risks. So I, I, I do think that, uh, Joe's actually trying to come to a position where we can all work with the traders, we can look them in the eye and not have them tell us that they're taking food out of their children's and dependents' mouth. I, I think that's the position we want to get to. But a, a longer term strategy may be knitted in with that, uh, element of, of, of the future strategy. And also where we as an authority see our markets, because they are social enterprise, they are incubators for future businesses and they are critically important to our most marginalized communities. Um, and yeah, I, I, we've got a great, great, good rapport with the owners of Crystal Peaks, I get that. Um, I, I'm prepared to accept that. But I still don't understand why they won't do more for the markets, like opening up a door. It's not that difficult. Uh, Jo- Joe's mentioned it, 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 it doesn't seem that hard. So I, 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 I'm supporting Joe and I, I know the Labour ventures here are, are supporting Joe, uh, in everything he's saying here.
Yeah.
Yeah. I know it's filmed, but I will do that yet.
Thank, thank you, Mark. And Mike, you indicated as well, did you? Are you Mike, Mike, please? Mi- Mike, Mike, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, the, 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 the reasoning that the officer has just given is, is faulty because this, this recommendation, um, on, on supply and demand principles means that we would actually lose income because traders would leave, leave the market hall in, uh, Crystal Peaks.
Thank you, thank you, Mike. I don't know if others want to hear, Ben, yeah?
So, so just to be clear, we haven't said anything today that, that we, we expect traders to leave because of the proposals. We've, we've said, actually, we proposed this because we think this is the best way to, to mitigate that. So just be really clear, we, we're not saying by increasing this, we expect traders, uh, to leave. It gives us the chance to work with them, um, to, to, to manage that uplift with them. Um, so, so I'm not saying that, okay?
Yes, but your figure in one point six two assumes that you would actually achieve one hundred percent occupancy. And I cannot see how you can get to that when you're, you're bringing in and bringing
Again, again, I don't think that's, I think that's not being clear, but I don't, I do think it assumes there'd be no loss of occupancy to achieve that, to achieve the figure that's printed. The, the one hundred percent figure, I think, is another illustration of the fact that the, the whole suite of figures we've got isn't, isn't clear. Um, I mean, I think it's worth saying that in any, in any market, you will have some traders who are on the edge at, at any time, whatever the level of fees, and you'll have some traders that are doing very well, probably. And the balance we're, we're, we're having to strike is, obviously we don't want to needlessly put money, public money into the hand of a business that's doing very well and can quite easily look after itself. But we do want the markets to succeed. We don't want to drive, um, people out of business who might be providing vital services to the community, particularly during a cost of living crisis. Um, and so we have to be really careful. And that's, I think that's the position we're taking. And I appreciate it's very difficult for officers to come back to us and say, well, you know, this many businesses will go under and they're not very important anyway. Um, you know, if we do this and, or we think they can all afford that, you don't, you don't, we don't, nobody knows. And, and so I can understand, you know, that why, why the frustration in terms of, well, we don't need to subsidize all of them clearly, um, and yet we are doing effectively a little bit. Um, but we, we, we need to have the information we, 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 you know, we need to have the best information we have and we need to proceed cautiously and we need to proceed with an eye on the occupancy rate as our kind of one true guide to whether the position, because, you know, it is a good deal, it's a good deal. You know, if you're, if you're listening out there, you want to run a market stall, go to Crystal Peaks or come to the mall. There's a great opportunity to do business, you know, we're not charging an arm and a leg for those stalls. Um, and, but there are some empty, so there's some, there's some mismatch between the two realities. Because if they, if they, you know, the market theory says if something's a great deal, then people, well, people take it up and people are not taking it up. So, um, that's, that's, that's the circle we need to square in order to understand, you know, how fast we can go on this. And, and, you know, and that's what I'd ask officers to come back with alongside the plans and to, to improve the performance of the markets, um, on both counts. Barbara?
Thank you, Joe, and it is a plea because I would like to know the trader's perspective on this as well, you know. I'm not the one who's on the bread, who really can't sort of manage the business. But what they would like to see to improve the footfall and the rest of it. And I think just a, I don't know what time limit there would be on this, but the, the potential of a review in six months, in that six months, if we raise the costs now, it, it could be really disastrous and I think none of us are prepared to risk that. And the last point about the entrance, it's the entrance, it's the one way in that really puts me off Crystal Peaks and to a certain extent the mall, because it's not a wel- if it's not a welcoming entrance, you don't actually explore further. So yeah, to reiterate, everything said about entrances, thank you.
Okay, I, I need to draw, we need to draw to a close fairly soon, we're nearly out of time for, for, for real. I've got Diane and then I'd like to make a decision.
Very quickly, Chair, there is an active traders association out there in the market at Crystal Peaks, so I would like to hear from them and, and the, when we, when we come back here.
Yeah, agreed, agreed. Okay, so, um, the proposal is, I don't know how, how you suggest we word this, but it's, it's, it's not to agree the recommendation in front of us and to, um, consider the issue of fees alongside the, the improvements plan later in the year. Uh, is that, is that sufficient?
Yeah, so you're proposing an amendment to the recommendation, which is to consider, uh, to, to have, to request that the report comes back later in the year, um, dealing with fees alongside a, a future strategy to the market, for the, for the markets. Um, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Can I have a second for that? Mark?
Absolutely.
Yep, okay. And is that agreed? I'll take silence as the agreement of the meeting. Thank you, thank you, that's great. I, you know, I apologize to officers for all the work they did put into this. I understand, you know, I understand where you're coming from. But, um, I think you, I'm sure you understand where we're coming from as well. Um, and there is a, you know, we do, we do feel that, that our duty in representing the city in, in terms of the bigger picture here um, demands that we, you know, we do what we've done. Um, so hopefully we can make progress on this issue later in the year and hopefully we can, we can support both markets to be, to be the thriving institutions that they deserve to be. All right, thank you, and I think that, that closes the meeting, doesn't it? Excellent. All right, thank you everybody for coming, thank you at home for watching and we'll see you next time.